Okay. Call back to order. The city council meeting for City of Beaumont for Tuesday, July 18th at 6:05. And we'll start with a, start with call to order and the roll call.
Councilman Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Roscoe is absent. Councilmember Lara?
Here.
Mayor Protam Carroll is absent. And Mayor White?
Here.
And we'll move to a report out from closed session. Mr. Pinkney?
Okay. The council met in closed session. Item two was conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9D2 and/or 3. Consideration of one claim and discussion of possible acceptance, rejection, or settlement of claim. And the claimant's name is Lucero. There was a reportable action taken, and there was a motion by Councilmember Lara to deny the claim and direct staff to work towards settlement of the claim. That motion was seconded by Mayor White, and the motion passed with Martinez voting in favor, Mayor White, and Councilmember Lara also voting in favor of the motion. Item number three, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9D2 and/or 3. Consideration of one claim and discussion of possible acceptance, rejection, or settlement of claim. And the claimant's name in that matter is Munkata. And there was a reportable action taken. There was a first by Mayor White to deny the claim and direct staff to attempt to settle the claim. And that motion was seconded by Councilmember Lara. And the vote was Mayor White in favor of the motion, Councilmember Lara in favor, and Councilmember Martinez in favor. So the motion passed. The item four was conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9D1 and/or 2 and/or 3. Workers' compensation case number COBM-0003. And there was a motion by Councilmember Lara to approve settlement of the claim. There was a second by Councilmember Martinez, and the vote was Mayor White, yes, Councilmember Lara, yes, and Councilmember Martinez, yes. And then number five was conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9D2 and/or 3. One potential case. There was no reportable action taken on that item. And that's a report out from closed session.
Thank you. Then we'll move to action on any requests for excused absences. Nancy Carroll, Mayor Protam Carroll is out of state for the birth of her son's first child. And so I'd like to move that that is an excused absence.
I'll second.
Councilman Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
And we'll do the pledge allegiance. Mr. Pardon, would you lead us here?
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Oh?
We have an invocation here.
Thank you. Chaplain, we have an invocation.
Our almighty and sovereign God, we gather this evening thankful, first of all, for our nation, our state, our city, and all levels of leadership in government. We thank you for the members of our council who are dedicating their time, energy, and talent for the benefit of Beaumont. We also thank you for the citizens who are assembled tonight, who have taken the time and interest to show support to the council. Now we pray for the members of our city council. Give them an understanding of the issues, wisdom in addressing solutions, respect for one another, courage and conviction to follow through with their votes. May they set aside their personal agendas and ambitions and serve for the welfare of the cities, citizens of Beaumont. I pray the citizens may support this council's decision, or if disagreement is present, graciously seek appropriate procedure for changes. Lord, we thank you for your presence this evening, and you may, may you bless these people present, the decisions made, and the whole city of Beaumont. May all present tonight seek to honor our city's motto posted before us in this room, which reads, "In God we trust." In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
So I guess we have an announcement tonight. Introduction of a new police employee.
As you know, in the 2017-18 budget, you authorized more police officer positions. Fortunately, we had Mr. Heidrich in backgrounds, waiting to go in the event that things turned out well. We had faith that they would. And so we were able to quickly finish up his process and bring him on board. And so I present to you Alan Heidrich. A great thing about Alan, he's a lifelong resident of Beaumont. Graduated from Beaumont High School, played football, track and field. And I don't think he did the long distance running.
No, I didn't do long distance running. If I can help it.
Yeah. Also has a bachelor's degree in human services from the University of Phoenix. So we're still raising that bar. And Alan is married with four children. He's got adult children, and he has some high school and middle-aged children as well. And so he's very active in our community with his family. Any questions, Colonel?
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.[466.52][466.52](APPLAUSE).
All right. Let's move on to public comments. Do we have public comments tonight?
Yes, we have one.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may please, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped conflict of interest disclosure.
Yeah. On item 22, looking at item 22, it does deal with the county of Riverside. I checked with council. They have indicated to me that there is no conflict of interest. However, in an effort to avoid any impropriety, I would ask that, I'll go ahead and accuse myself on that item.
So the, under the Political Reform Act, if the source of income to the council member is from a governmental agency, then there's a specific exclusion under the Political Reform Act. So it would not be a legal conflict, but Councilmember Lara has indicated to avoid even the appearance of any impropriety, he's going to recuse himself on that item since it involves the county.
Okay. And since it leaves only two of us to vote on it, I would like to pull that item and table it for the next council meeting. You okay with that, Mr. Martinez?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. I'll open public comments at 6:13.
Ron Roy?
Mr. Roy.
Good afternoon, council. Who's here? I hope you're having a great summer and get a chance to chill. And you know, it's always a good thing to do. But let me jump into my issue, and I'm glad we have the bond community tonight. I'm in 19A. We had our bond refinanced in 2015 for around $19 million. The reason I'm upset, that's why we get to come up here for a couple of minutes, my understanding is that we paid over the last 10 years almost $7 million for future facilities fees, and we had nothing in writing to indicate what's, how that's going to be given back to our community. That's through our own, you know, 19A, okay? And also, there's $8.6 million that I believe has been held in, I don't know what you would call if it's held in abeyance or reconsideration, but that money, nobody's talked about that. We need to know. I think that should be put to pay, put back to pay down the debt on our bonds. So I'm not a part of the, the bonds that are later in the agenda because we already got refinanced. So that's wanted to do in a public comment. One thing I'm really upset, okay, I have an issue with our bond counsel because I would like him to say in writing the exact legal basis for paying down or accelerating payment on our bond. Because we can pay off, any one of us, I can pay off our bond balance. And yet, I heard him say that we can't do that collectively. I propose that, you know, if we could accelerate the payoff, maybe take 10 years off of our note, the public mortgage, you know, is what I call it. I do think that, it seems incredibly fair, but I've been told that, the council said that's illegal. Well, I don't want to hear anything in words anymore. I want it in writing. I want specifically, why would it be illegal to have an aggregate payment recognized? So we have 550 property owners. So we're, let's say we're owing like 50 grand a piece or something. If we all can come into an agreement where we can accelerate payoff in an aggregated manner, I want something in writing from this man right here, no more smoke. Okay? I'm really upset because if we have a right to do it, we should do that. If we don't have the right, I want to know the exact source why we can't do that. So that's my gripe. We want to pay it off early, if necessary. This is the only issue. There's other issues. The 6.7 million, what has, can that go to payoff? Also, the 8.6 million, which has been held in abeyance. This is something that's been brought up in the spring workshops. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Roy.
Another request.
Good evening, council. I would like to bring up another issue that I have brought up in the past, just as a reminder, and just to keep attention on it. And the issue is having a city attorney that is accountable.
Excuse me. I'm going to step out of the room so that the speaker can talk freely without me sitting here.
So that the city, the citizens can have a city attorney that's legally accountable to the citizens. You three understand what that means, but the general public may not truly understand what that means. When you have a contract city attorney, that's a law firm like we have now, we can't access that private business's records. We cannot, when I say we, I mean the citizens, under the Public Informations Act. We citizens cannot access that company's emails, private records, financials. They're a private business. We cannot access that. The transparency stops right there. When you have a city attorney that's employed by the city, then you can access all the information leading to any issue that you may have on any subject. Emails, cell phones, correspondence, it's all falls under the Public Information Act. Right now, it does not because it's a private business that we consult with. Now, I've heard the argument, well, we've had a private attorney. Can you see where that got us? No. We had a consulting attorney with the original council that basically all levels of city government was corrupted, and they then took that private attorney and put him on city payroll to stay off the naysayers. Because as you all are aware of, we, you were here on this side of the podium one time saying we could not access those records because of this, this, and this, the same argument that I'm making today. So we hired that city attorney, but that wasn't a fair comparison because that city attorney was hired during the course of the corruption at all levels of city government. So it wasn't a fair play. Now, what I'm requesting is that you guys consider hiring a city attorney that's accountable to the people that falls under the Public Information Act for several points. One, I understand that the city was upside down legally. A consulting firm at the time seems like the best choice. But having a city attorney at this point that works for the city, that's accountable to the people, as you all promised, that would give us the public information that we need to get the information straight. Second point is very simple, is you can still consider having a consulting firm that works directly with your city council, with your city legal council. The consulting firm doesn't have to go away. They're still handling cases, but the everyday business of city government that's accountable to the people, you have a city attorney. This basically boils down to one simple rule of thumb that we're all taught, checks and balances. And I know my time's up, but I just need a little extra time since the city attorney recused himself. Checks and balances is all the community is asking. It's what you guys ran on when you guys ran for city council, and I think that should be duly respected, as you are on city council, and to really consider hiring a private city attorney that's accountable to the people under the Public Information Act. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Dominguez.
No other speakers.
No other speakers. I'll close the public comments at 6:21. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are taken as one action item unless an item is pulled for further discussion. That would be addressed here or at the end of the action items. Approval of all ordinances and resolutions to be read by title only. Do we have any items that we, that you'd like to pull?
Mayor, I'd like to pull item eight and item 10.
And Mr. Martinez?
No, I have a question on eight, but that's, no other one.
Mr. Pardon, I skipped over the adjustments to the agenda. Did you have any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, if we could pull item 18, we will bring that back to you on August 1st. We'll consider it.
Okay. So we pulled item 18, and then the other one that we pulled, what number was that?
That's 22.
22? Okay.
Thank you.
So before I entertain a motion on the consent calendar, I'd like to address one of the items on there. I don't think it needs to be pulled. Item number seven, this is an issue that is, something that has come up before, and it seems like when I addressed this issue back in June of 2015, it really didn't stick in some people's minds. So I was hoping Mr. Berg would be here tonight because he raised the issue back then, and he wasn't here when I got the advice letter from the FPPC. So I'm going to go ahead and read two letters. One is a letter that I wrote to the FPPC on Monday, June 22nd, 2015. It's an email, and then I'll read their reply. And it's regarding my conflict of interest in regards to my employer and my employer's customers. So here's, here's what I wrote. "I am a sitting council member for the City of Beaumont. Last week in council, in a council meeting, a citizen raised a question regarding a possible conflict of interest regarding my employer. I am a relatively low-level employee for a medium-sized, approximately 3,000-employee software-development firm, ESRI, what's now known as Esri. My company develops mapping software solutions for land use management as well as other geographic information systems, uses. Most cities, counties, special districts, and engineering firms use our software. ESRI has hundreds of thousands of customers and millions of end-users worldwide. I've been employed by ESRI for 18 years. I'm a developer of internal web applications for sales reporting to sales and corporate management. I play no role in marketing, contracting, or sales development. I have no contact whatsoever with company's customers. I am paid a salary with no commission or incentive compensation. City of Beaumont is currently appealing a $43 million judgment awarded to the Riverside, Western Riverside Council of Governments, WRCOG. WRCOG is one of ESRI's customers. Since my election to the council last November, I have not been asked to vote on any matters concerning WRCOG. Last week, a citizen demanded I resign and threatened to go to the district attorney and the state because I didn't disclose that WRCOG is one of my employer's customers. Almost every government entity, real estate developer, and consultants working for our city, other cities, water districts, and many of the organizations coming before council are end-users of ESRI software. What are my disclosure requirements? What if disclosing ESRI customers is a violation of ESRI's confidentiality agreements? Am I in violation of any FPPC rules or regulations by failing to disclose my company's customer relationship with WRCOG? If I do disclose a customer of ESRI, but I no way personally benefit financially in any decision made by the council, must I recuse myself? Please call me if you have any questions or need more information. I want to be fully transparent, but I also need to keep my livelihood to support my family. I would appreciate a timely response." This letter was generated after the city attorney at the time told me that I did not have a conflict of interest, but I still wanted to get the FPPC's advice on that. So their advice letter comes back as this. "For purpose of disclosure, under the Political Reform Act, an employee with no ownership interest in the business does not typically have to disclose customers of a business. Although, note that employees who receive commission income for a specific sale or transaction as a broker, agent, or salesperson may be required to disclose customers of a business. Nonetheless, this special rule for commission income does not appear to apply to your position with ESRI. For purposes of disqualification under the Political Reform Act, the rules are a little more complex. Assuming you have no ownership interest in ESRI or commission income from a customer of ESRI, you are not prohibited from taking part in any city decision based merely upon the fact that a party in the proceeding is a customer of ESRI. However, you may be disqualified from taking part in a city decision if a party in the proceeding is a customer of ESRI, and there will be a reasonably foreseeable financial effect on ESRI. Accordingly, all I can generally advise at the time is that you must carefully consider whether any city decision may have a potential financial effect on ESRI prior to participating in the decision. You may wish to discuss general conflict of interest requirements, including any requirements outside of the Political Reform Act, with your city's attorney. If you need assistance determining if any particular decision may have a reasonably foreseeable effect on ESRI, you may also wish to seek further advice from the FPPC." As I stated in my letter, it is a violation of my working relationship with my company to disclose issues about my customers, or about the company's customers. It has been said recently that there's a huge contract between WRCOG and ESRI. So I went through a public records request. I received this through a public records request, and I asked for invoices between WRCOG and ESRI since the time that I came on council here to determine, as has been stated, that there's a huge contract, that if WRCOG is not happy, and that it may result in my company having to lay people off because of the cost that it would, it would impact the company of ESRI. I have two invoices, one's from February 28th, I'm sorry, 2014, that was before I was on council. So I have one at July 16th for 2014 for the total amount of $3,000 for maintenance of ArcGIS desktop software. I have another one on May 5th of 2015. That is for $3,000 of maintenance for ArcGIS software. And then there's another one on June 8th of 2016 for maintenance of $3,000 of software. I can't go into the details of the size of our company, but an account that is paying our company, which is the world leader in GIS, $3,000 a year, I assure you, is not going to have a financial damage impact on my company. So with that all out there, I'm sure it hasn't been put to rest. I'm sure there'll be new FPPC claims filed against me, but I am not going to recuse myself on item number seven. And I'd like to make a motion that we approve the balance of the consent agenda, which is all the items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9, and 11. And we're pulling out item 10.
I do have one speaker on seven.
Okay. Then let's pull item seven. And I will make a motion to approve items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 9, and 11.
I'll second.
Councilman Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Now we'll go to item seven, and I'll open public comments on item seven at 6:30.
Hello, council. If you don't know this already, then, or if you know it already, then I'm just repeating what you already know, but there's, you're in the process of joining Archog, okay? So we assume that's the case, and you're going forward. I've learned that the, Archog is sponsoring a joint powers agreement for community choice aggregation power. And they're going to be asking Beaumont whether or not they want to participate in that program. I don't want to try and get into the details of what community choice aggregation is. I am a Southern California Edison customer, and I have no position either way. I'm not, I just would like to ask that as soon as the council gets a chance, with all deliberate speed, that they come out with an official position on whether they want to participate. And I know there's probably timing involved, since I don't really know if you've joined yet or not, you know? So I'm probably like a lot of people. But if you could just give us a process on that and give us a position whether or not you want to opt in or opt out, just for your information, some cities opt out, like, you know, Rancho Mirage doesn't want to have anything to do with it. They want to do it their own way, with a lot of flexibilities. This is sort of being sponsored by this regional agency, Warcock. So I'm just giving you that. That's it. Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Roy, don't go anywhere.
Sure.
Just, we are members of WRCOG as of, I attended the first meeting that anyone from Beaumont has attended in probably eight years, last week or the week before. Can you explain what the issue is here? And don't go anywhere. Can you explain what the staff report on this item is?
Right. This specific action item is to actually officially approve the resolution that will ratify the city's reentry into WRCOG. So at your last meeting, you approved an amendment to the JPA that added Beaumont back in. This is the final step, this, a formal resolution which ratifies that action.
Okay. And Mr. Roy, I am the representative for the city on the executive board of WRCOG. Send me an email. Sit down. You tell me what your thoughts are, and I'll act accordingly.
Okay. That sounds fair. Yeah, this is, just get a position. Again, I would like to emphasize, I don't want you to do anything for or against right now. I would want you to do all your deliberate research and come up, you know, right now, keep a blank slate, because I, I'm in the same situation. And that's it. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments.
One other piece of clarification for Mr. Roy as well is that we are, I have been briefed on the CCA from WRCOG staff, have had a meeting of the managers with Riverside County that last week as well. And so there's some split opinions out there with regard to the different managers about whether the CCA is a good policy position or not. So I'm sure some will join and some may not. So we're plugged in. We're aware of that. So we're looking at that as well. And we'll be talking to our peer cities to kind of get some ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pardon. Do we have anyone else who wants to speak on this item?
Yes.
Good evening, council. Once again, I would like to interpret it to anybody that's watching or listening to this council meeting, what this topic actually means. Because I believe that the general citizen himself, he or she, truly doesn't understand what this whole issue is about. The bottom line is, this issue is about double taxation. Once again, the citizens of Beaumont will be paying their taxes, and those taxes will be going to another government agency that formed a government agency to do a pool of tax dollars for county transportation improvements. Well, what does that mean? Well, make a long story short, you pay your property tax bill twice a year, or once a year, depending where you're at, you know, if you pay once a year. Some of those monies will be transferred to different parts of the county for other road improvements that affect countywide. So bottom line is, So bottom line is, tax dollars are generated here, sent somewhere else. I think with everything that the citizens of Beaumont have been through, that is a wrong idea. Because we live in a unique area. We live where the 60, the 10, Hammett Freeway, all of that come together. Beaumont can do this by itself and keep its tax dollars here. There's federal money, there's state money, since we have a unique situation. Joining WRCOG, all that did was send our tax dollars out of the city and our communities who are already taxed out from the mismanagement of the past council and city government. All you've done is approve openly and authorize those taxes to be sent outside the city. Now, you can doctor it up, you can sugarcoat it, you can put any cake design you want on it, but that's the bottom line. People pay their taxes in the communities they live to improve the infrastructure of their community for their property values. As a city government, it's your due diligence to go after those tax dollars that are available to you folks from developers, state, and federal agencies and programs, not to join an organization that taxes our citizens and spends their money outside the area. WRCOG is nothing more than a government agency created by another government agency that feeds multiples of businesses that has relationships with people in this room. Now, not going to go down the theory of pointing fingers and how politics works, but it's there. So I just want the community to understand what you folks did.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Dominguez, I'd like to respond and clarify some issues. You can go ahead and have a seat.
If you respond, I can respond.
No, you won't be.
Yes, I can, it's public information. You responded to me, I can respond.
Actually, you have three minutes. And is the three minutes up? Okay.
I was always in the role that if they acknowledge me, that I have the right to acknowledge back, since he's the one that called it.
I will close the public comments period at 6:36, please.
Okay, so have a one-way conversation then.
Okay. I am glad that you want to protect the tax dollars of the city of Beaumont, I do too. And I'm going to ask Mr. Pinkney, after I give you my position and my understanding of what WRCOG is, how it's built, Mr. Pinkney can correct me or fill in the blanks where I've missed it. WRCOG has two, primarily two sources of funding. One is the Measure A tax dollars, sales tax dollars, and the other is TUMF fees, transportation uniform mitigation fees. Whether or not we are a member of WRCOG or not, the Measure A money goes to WRCOG. It's collected. When we became, when we stopped becoming members of WRCOG nine years ago, they withheld the half percent, the half portion of the Measure A tax, sales tax money that would come back to Beaumont. Because the agreement was that if we were not part of the TUMF program, that money would be used by WRCOG in the way that they chose to use it. That tax money was not coming back to Beaumont. For eight years now, we have not been getting that Measure A tax increment. The settlement that we put forward changes that. Joining WRCOG and being, coming a part of the TUMF program again, reestablishes, thank you, Mr. Lara, the sales tax coming back to the city. It is estimated the first year, that full year that we'll get back is going to be somewhere above $800,000. So we have been forgiving and not getting that sales tax money of all the, all the sales tax people, I'm sorry, of all the sales taxpayers in Beaumont. By doing this, moving to WRCOG, I'm glad you agree that we need to protect and keep our sales tax dollars here, it starts bringing that back to us, and it's something that we've wanted to change. Mr. Pinkney, if you can.
Well, that's correct. It's actually the exact opposite of what the gentleman said at the podium. We cannot participate in the Measure A dollars that are currently going to WRCOG and to the region as a whole unless we are a member of the TUMF program. By rejoining the TUMF program, the city will be allocated its share of the sales tax dollars that are collected and generated from within Beaumont. That money will come back to the city once the city's back in the TUMF program. And between now and the end of the Measure A program, it's approximately $28 million.
And just for clarification, because it may come up, the settlement agreement with WRCOG indicated that the first five years, we will get all of that, all of the Measure A tax money. So for, over the next first five years, we're going to start receiving $800,000 plus a year, and then after the fifth year, we start moving into a sharing arrangement to pay back the part of the settlement that we, that was created because of our decision to part ways with WRCOG and attack, and go through a lawsuit, correct?
That's right. The settlement involved the judgment amount being reduced, and then one component of the settlement was that by, when the city rejoins the TUMF program, it will be entitled to receive approximately, and it's based on sales tax revenue, approximately $28 million over the life of Measure A. And then a portion of that will go back after five years to WRCOG, will be sharing it with them to pay down that reduced settlement amount.
Perfect, thank you. Are there any?
The end result of it is a net gain to the city in Measure A tax revenues, not the other way around.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pinkney. Are there any comments or questions from council on this issue?
So, well, just as a part of this negotiation or this agreement, the city is not paying the $67 million that they were.
That's correct. The, and we're not talking about the settlement tonight, one component of the settlement was to rejoin WRCOG. And so the resolution tonight adopts, ratifies the joint powers agreement that you already voted on at a prior council meeting, ratifying the joint powers agreement. But the, the settlement was, the judgment amount was $67 million, and they reduced that significantly as part of the settlement, and then allowed the city to repay part of it through Measure A dollars that we're not currently receiving, so. But I don't want to go into that in much more detail, because that's not really.
It's not agendized. I'll entertain a motion for item number seven on the consent agenda.
Go ahead.
I'll move that we approve consent item number eight, or excuse me, seven, resolution of the city of Beaumont approving an amendment, addendum to join WRCOG as a member agency.
I'll second.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Okay, that concludes the consent agenda. We'll move on to item number 12.
Eight.
Oh, eight, sorry. That didn't conclude the consent agenda. Item number eight, Mr. Lara, you pulled that one, let's talk about it.
Yeah, just really quickly, in the county of Riverside, what we started doing on some of the items like this, Form 11s, is we identified, where we indicate that there is no fiscal impact at this time. There is a minor fiscal impact, it may includes an impact, fiscal impact such as attorney costs and/or staff time. And so, a suggestion that I have is that maybe we start including an estimate of what we think that that will be, so that it kind of adds to the transparency of the project costs. It was just a suggestion, that's all I had on that item. And outside of that, I'll make a motion to approve item eight on the consent calendar.
And I'll second that.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Item number 10, Mr. Lara.
Going through that item, just wanted to thank the Economic Development Committee on their work on the SWOT analysis. I thought it was very good. What I wanted to suggest possibly is that, in that SWOT analysis, they indicate weaknesses that the city has, and looking at those weaknesses, it appears as though we've, we are addressing a number of those, but I thought maybe if we keep a count or track of those items that we have addressed as weaknesses, we can kind of see where the city is at in regards to that SWOT analysis, and maybe we just, we track those items just to see that we are moving forward on it. Just a thought. And that was my only comment on that.
Mr. Martinez, do you have any comments on that?
Well, my computer went down. But from my recall, I want to thank you for that report, it looked really good and well laid out, and it was very, had everything that I wanted on there in a good format, so I just wanted to thank the staff for that.
And my question is, what do we do with it now? What happens with the SWOT analysis?
So one of the, without going into it, because I'm sure everyone read it a couple different times, because they liked it so much, what the committee did with the SWOT analysis, that identified where the city currently sits in terms of the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. And they used the SWOT analysis in those four categories to create a list of ideas. And typically, they were, they're ideas where you would identify a weakness, and then you could utilize a strength to shore up that weakness, or you could use, invest in an opportunity to shore up that weakness, or to identify a strength that could be capitalized by offsetting or shoring up weakness, so the opposite of that. So the committee itself created maybe, I don't know, maybe 15 to 20 ideas, and they were just abstract ideas on how to, how to connect some dots within the SWOT analysis. And then what they did was they, they took those list of ideas and turned those into those four goal statements, as well as the vision statement that was presented to city council. So the SWOT analysis basically acted as the framework on how the Economic Development Committee came up with the four goals and the vision statement that was presented to councils. So now what we do is we start working on the four goals that were presented, and in anything else that the committee wants to come up with, that council approves.
Okay, and since we're talking about Economic Development Committee, even though I didn't pull item nine, can you just sort of give us a brief information as to who the new member of the Economic Development Committee, and a little bit about the resume of that gentleman?
Sure, I should have probably had him send over some, some fun resume to read, but Rob Moran is the Economic Development Manager at Riverside County, and I've worked with him almost my entire career here. He's been there for countless amount of years, and he acts as a liaison to every city within the county, and he works as an economic development professional for unincorporated areas of the county. So like CABZON, or things like that, are a direct result of his department's efforts. And other cities, including Beaumont, utilize his department, as well as his department's resources, to help leverage our strengths at the city. So he has great access to workforce development centers, he has great access and analysts on his staff that crunch data in terms of industry groups and what sectors are needing what, or what sectors pay what in terms of an average hourly rate. So we get an idea from, from city's perspective, whether we want to court that business, whether it's worth it, or if they're very low-paying jobs, the county, the county analysis will tell us that. And he does a lot of other different things, but that's just a quick snippet of how he interacts with the city, as well as every other city in Riverside County.
Well, I want to applaud staff, that's a great addition. It's not a requirement that every member lives in the city of Beaumont, but does, is he a citizen of Beaumont?
I don't think so yet, but I can ask him if he wants to move here.
Okay. Thank you.
He might take us up on it, if he has to come here once a month for EDC, right?
Got a lot of experience, a great addition to that committee, that's for sure.
Yeah, I think it was a great addition. So I think it's great that our little committee could draw that kind of attention, so. So I will, if there's, unless there's more discussion on item 10, I'll make a motion to approve item 10.
I'll second.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Item number 12. Approve the resolution of the city council acting as a legislative body of the city of Beaumont, Community Facilities District Number 93-1, authorizing the issuance of special tax refunding bonds to refund 10 series of special tax bonds.
We need Mayor White, Councilmember Lara, Councilmember Martinez, Brian Forbath from Stradlin Yocca, Carlson Routh here. So you have before you this evening the actual approval of the financing, the refinancing program that we've been talking about on many different occasions with you all. Tonight is the actual formal approval by the city council acting as legislative body of CFD 93-1, of all of the various financing documents that are required in order to execute and carry out the financing. Just to remind everybody, we're talking about 10 different improvement areas here. We have improvement area 6A1, 8, 8A, 8B, 8C, 8D, 14, 14A, 14B, and 19C. And just for clarification for the record, none of the council members who are present here this evening live or reside or have an interest in any of these improvement areas. So the actions before you tonight are to authorize the issuance of bonds by the CFD on behalf of each one of these improvement districts, improvement areas, excuse me, the approval of the form of various legal documents required to execute the transactions. Six, the first six improvement areas will be bought by Western Alliance Bank, and that is expected to close next week. Four additional improvement areas will close the first week in August to City National Bank. And all of the bonds of the refunding will be complete as of the, as of August, and the bonds will be refunded in August and September, in order to effectuate the savings for all the residents on the roll next year. With that, that's sort of a broad summary of the approvals. I'm more than happy to answer any questions. I know attached to the staff report on the last page, there was an exhibit, much, it's the same exhibit, nothing's changed from the financial analysis that we brought to council at the last meeting in terms of the savings per parcel, the interest rates, the fees paid to consultants or any of that, that's all the same, there's been no changes in any of that. But there is a, an exhibit that, that highlights the par amount of each improvement area, the interest rate, the gross savings, the net present value savings, the average annual savings per parcels, and then certain of the, the cost of issuance, and then, you know, the optional redemption provisions in there. And I, you know, with me this evening are Mike Bush from Futures, Richard Wall from Our Web Associates, and Katie Koster from Piper Jaffrey, who would be more than happy to answer any questions anyone might have on this topic.
Okay, do we have any public comments on this item?
No.
Okay, Mr. Forbath, don't go anywhere. Okay. So let me ask you some general questions, because we spent, we spent a long, a lot of time on this, the last time we talked about this. In general, has anything changed significantly financially in the proposals and the estimates that you brought to us last time?
Not from when we were here two weeks ago, or three weeks ago. No, there's been no change in the finances, other than there's been some slight reductions in the cost of issuance, the bank council fees, where we were able to whittle those down a little bit for some marginal additional savings.
And are we extending the terms on any of the, these 10 improvement areas beyond what they are now?
We are not.
And we had, would be presented to the homeowners, and do you know what that, do you remember what that was?
We've achieved at least 3% net present value savings on all these transactions, and many of them have much higher than that, but every single one of these is higher than 3% net present value savings.
Okay, and how many items, how many improvement areas are, are, we removing a 2% escalator from, of the 10?
Need help on that. Three, three of the 10, we're removing the 2% escalator.
Okay, and then do you have an idea of the number of homes, homeowners in Beaumont that are going to benefit from this action tonight?
We have that here. What's the? Approximately 6,000.
About 6,000.
6,000 households.
Okay. And as I remember before, this is a beginning phase of our effort to try and bring more relief to as many of the mellorous homeowners as we can.
Correct. These were the transactions that are, were currently callable, that we didn't have to, that satisfied the savings provision, the savings thresholds that we've discussed. We will continue to monitor the other improvement areas this upcoming year and in the years to come, and, you know, if market conditions are such that we can capture savings and pass those along to the homeowners, we will definitely seek to try to achieve that.
Okay, and one last question, and then I'll turn up for you guys. Mr. Roy raised the question about his improvement area 19A. I understand why the, it's the way he presented the issue. We can't talk about it tonight, because it's not on the agenda, but what I'd like you to do is sort of provide us a summary of something in writing of why. to do is sort of provide us a summary of something in writing of why, in his situation, where it was recently refinanced, if, and if not, why not, what he's suggesting would happen.
I could do that. That's no problem.
Thank you. Mr. Laura, did you have any questions?
So it's about 6,000 parcels that are impacted. And I was actually, I'm really excited that this agenda item has made it to this far. This has been something that we have been, I don't want to say blasted is not a good term, but something we have worked with, this council, Mayor White, myself, for two and a half years. This has been a constant thorn in homeowner's sides with the 2% escalator, the way that the CFDs were initially set up. Now we're actually trying to reduce the payment, and in some cases, where possible, eliminate the 2% escalator. And we're ballparking 19,000 residents roughly, which is about 40% of the city is going to receive a benefit here.
$33 million in gross savings.
But tonight, only about 6,000 are benefiting from.
Yeah, the 6,000 homes.
6,000 homes.
The gross savings, total dollars saved of residents in those 6,000 homes over the life of deals is roughly $34 million.
And we're not extending anything. It's not costing anymore. It's, so it's exciting, and I want to thank you all for the work that you've done, Mr. Bush, Mr. Forbath. I mean, the efforts that your firm has put into this at our request, it's such a short amount of time. And not to mention the fact of the cost, the cost reduction in getting it this far as well. We're not paying for, see, we're not paying for any engineering fees. So it's just, this is a great, for me, it's a great evening. So thank you all for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Mr. Martinez, any questions?
Just a couple of questions and one comment. So as the attorneys, you've looked over the agreements, and you don't see anything that's non-standard in the agreement?
No, these are all standard, I mean, these are all standard commercially reasonable provisions that we've negotiated with the banks on your behalf. I mean, there's nothing more onerous in these documents than are in your existing bond documents that we have. And in many instances, we've been able to sort of negotiate concessions from the existing terms that you already have.
Okay, and I've read the risk disclosures. Any other things the public should be aware of or concerned about? I mean, everything sounds great, but, you know, sometimes it doesn't sound too good to be true. So I just want to make sure that the public knows that there's no risk or anything that we need to be aware of.
I think the only risk that I would say is that, you know, the bond deal hasn't closed yet, and there's still things that could come up if some really bad events or something happened at the city. The banks could still get cold feet and decide not to close.
But I mean, once it starts.
Yeah, but once it's done and closed, it'll be done and closed, and the savings will be passed on. And the bank, at that point in time, will assume all the risk of the transaction.
Okay, and my only comment is, I am true, I agree with Councilman Laura, this is way overdue. And I want to thank all those involved to getting us to this point. And I just want to assure the council and to the public that we, as councils, still have our responsibility to maintain transparency and accountability of where the bond money is going. So we want to make sure that we keep up to that bargain on our part.
And to that point, I would just reiterate, there are no new money for construction proceeds or anything that are being generated out of these refundings. All the monies that are being generated by the sale of these bonds are going directly to the retirement of the bonds or the costs associated with the retirement of the bonds.
And one last question, sort of for both you and Mr. Bush, and a general question. Are you involved in a lot of situations where cities are lowering property taxes?
Lowering, I mean, lowering CFD special taxes?
Yes.
I think, you know, most of our clients are actively out looking for opportunities to refund bonded indebtedness, to reduce the tax burden on their properties.
Okay.
And the market, the interest rates are, you know, if not at historic lows, or all-time historic lows, they're at close to that at this point in time for credits of, you know, like this.
Okay, and Mr. Bush, would you respond to that, too?
We, last year, we closed 170 transactions across the state. I would say probably 30 or 40% of those were refinancing deals. We are seeing right now a lot of refinancing of CFDs, similar to your situation. I think that the process that Katie suggested worked out extremely well. That is somewhat of a unique process here, given the volume of the transactions. It worked out incredibly well. We got really good bids, and I think one of the comments that Brian made about some of the differences, in one case, one of your bidders has a call provision of only eight years. So traditionally, they're 10. You know, you got a 60-day lock, you know, so you got a great transaction, I think, in front of you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nicole, do we have any public comments on this item?
No.
Okay. So entertain, I'm sorry, I'm going to jump in here. I move to approve item number 12. Adopt the resolution authorizing the refunding bonds. Approve the form of bond indenture. Approve form of supplemental indenture. Approve form of escrow agreement. Approve placement agent agreement. And approve the bond council agreement. I can do that all in one motion, correct? Okay.
I'll second.
Go ahead.
Good.
I'll second.
Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Okay, item number 13. We're going to call to order the special meeting of the Beaumont Finance Authority. So do I adjourn this current meeting first? Is that the way we do this?
You can recess it temporarily while we start the meeting of the finance.
Okay, so we'll recess.
We'll reopen it after we conclude the finance authority portion of the meeting.
Okay, what Mr. Pinkney said. So I will call to order the special meeting of the Beaumont Financing Authority at 7:01. Item number 13 is approve the resolution of the Beaumont Financing Authority approving the execution and delivery of escrow agreements to refund certain of the authority's outstanding bonds.
Good evening, Mayor White, councilmembers. So this item, the bonds that are outstanding were issued through the Beaumont Financing Authority. And so in order to refund these bonds, we need to have the Financing Authority instruct the existing trustee on how to go about refunding the bonds, which bonds to refund, et cetera. And the way we do that is through an escrow agreement. And the escrow agreement is a three-party agreement between the trustee, the Financing Authority as the issuer of the bonds, and then also the CFD 93-1 as the issuer of the CFD bonds. So this action tonight really just approves the form of the escrow agreement, which is an integral part of the financing that we just talked about in the last matter.
Okay. Are there any questions? Any public comments on this item?
None.
Okay, are there any questions?
No.
For staff or council? Okay, so I'd like to entertain a motion for item number 13.
I'll move. I saw move. Did I mean to read it?
Yeah, just the item 1 and 2, I'd read those.
Okay, so I move to adopt the resolution approving the form of escrow agreement and to approve the form of escrow agreement.
And I'll second that.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. And we will adjourn the special meeting of the Beaumont Financing Authority at 7:04. Item number 14, appointment to the Beaumont Planning Commission. So can we get a staff report on this first, basically what we're doing, and then I'll sort of lay out the approach we're going to take?
We have a vacancy on the planning commission. And so I've put together a voting sheet for all three of you, and all the applicants should be here for you to ask any questions. And we will, once that's done, then you guys can vote, and scoring 1 through 5. We can take a short break, and I'll compile all the votes, and then we can go from there.
Okay. Took the words out of my mouth. So what I thought we would do is have each person who would like to come up and talk to us for a few minutes. We'll use the three-minute timer, just sort of as a guide. I don't want to cut you off, but let's not run this too long. And then if we have, as a council, have questions for any or all of the applicants, then we'll ask you to come back up and we'll ask the questions for you. And then at the end of that point, the three of us will rank our top three picks, with three being the highest and one getting, is our third pick. And then we'll take a break, and we'll come back with the totals. Correct? Everyone good with that? Okay, so why don't you call the first applicant?
Bill Cooper?
Nicole, did you leave me a score sheet?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Bill Cooper. I'm resident in Beaumont for about 14 years. I don't consider myself a long-term resident, but I also consider myself a newcomer. I'm retired, as I was formerly employed by the Riverside County Office of Education. I have an interest in what happens in Beaumont. I have time available. I would like to offer my services as a member of the planning commission. I currently assist on the General Plan Committee, which at some point, hopefully, will bring a recommendation to the city council for the new general plan. I'm excited about what I've seen happen in the General Plan Committee so far. I think the general plan, hopefully, will guide, help guide the planning commission towards how they deal with various issues that come before them. I guess I'm a person of moderation. I come to, I came here from several smaller communities that grew into larger communities. I used to live in Ventura, I used to live in Marietta. I see some of those changes occurring here. In certain cities, I saw the growth done well, and in other places, I saw the growth done not so well. I would like to use that background to be able to share at least my thoughts on how things can happen in the city of Beaumont. You know, Beaumont has a, any planning commission has to balance the public interest of the community with the private interest of the folks who come before it. You know, it requires careful listening, careful attention, questioning, and discussion with other members of the commission in order to create good results. That basically is why I'm here. I have no vested interest in this, other than I'd like to be an active, helpful citizen.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Just for clarification on the scoring here. It had five, we would rate all five, from five to one. What are you guys' thoughts on that? I just want to make sure we get that settled. Do you want to go three to one or five to one? Does it matter?
I don't know if it matters, but we can go one to three.
Okay. Three will be your, the highest scored, and the candidate you choose as your best fit. Okay?
Resigned.
All right. Next.
Next is Jolynn Hill.
I'd like to thank you guys for this opportunity to serve the community. One, I'd like to state, I'm Jolynn Hill. I'm not just a resident of this community, I also work here, I'm raising my family here. I have lots of friends and family in this community as well. So my stake in this community runs pretty deep, and that's why I'm here tonight. I feel like Mr. Cooper said, we need to represent the residents of this city. And I'm very proud of this city. I've been here since 1988, and not just want to be a more informed citizen, but I'd like to be able to give my two cents. I see that as a young family member, we're kind of missing those things. I'd like to point us in that direction and always represent the community of young family members I know. As an educator in this community, I have the unique opportunity to listen to all of the many families in this area, to see what their wants and needs are for this community. While I have very little experience in this, like I said, I definitely have a lot of stake in this community and very proud to be a member of this community. As far as things I'd like to see happen, I'm very appreciative of seeing the sidewalks going in on the east side of Beaumont Ave. I'd like to see continued improvement of the roads. I think these are some things we need. I'd also like to see more family-friendly businesses come in this area. Like I said, my main concern is being able to represent the young families in this area. We feel like there's not a lot to do for families as far as entertainment and businesses that serve us to keep our money here and keep our kids active in this community. Well, again, I'd just like to thank you guys for this opportunity and have a nice night.
Mr. Hill, real quick, you're an educator. What do you do?
I teach fourth grade at Sundance Elementary.
Perfect, thank you.
Rosalyn Kraut.
Thank you. I am Rosalyn Kraut, as you know, and I've lived in Beaumont for 14 years or so, in the Oak Valley Greens area. I'm married, I have two stepdaughters in college. I moved here as a working professional, and I retired after 30 years working for San Bernardino County in the Information Technology Department. I love Beaumont. I think it's such a wonderful and peaceful place. I've fostered children for a number of years. I volunteered in the city of San Bernardino as a president for nonprofit. I recently volunteered as a human sex trafficking advocate for victims of that environment. I am now on the General Plan Committee, which is a visionary plan committee, which is for the city of Beaumont, to see how we should go in our directions. So how did I get here? Well, I expressed an interest, and I applied for the appointment. Figured basic qualifications, like people, have a sense of humor, patience, and listen. But more specifically, my background is, I have associate's degree from Riverside Community College. I was employed with San Bernardino County, and as a professional, had development training through our resource center there. I completed a leadership academy course for supervisors' development program. And with that, I was awarded a commendation from the Board of Supervisors. I served my department as a member of standards and procedures. I participated in our department's employee focus group. I chaired my employee quarterly committee for employees that are doing outstanding work. My department, Information Services, the division I worked in was planning and control, which provided secure, stable, and scalable infrastructure, supporting business solutions that improve the process of the services for the county. This county, which covers over 20,000 square miles, is the largest county in the United States. This division allowed me to work with an extensive cross-section This division allowed me to work with an extensive cross-section of management occupations in the county on various products, projects, excuse me, design reviews, audits, acceptance testing, business application processes, standards and practices, problem analysis and resolution, capacity planning, disaster recovery planning, and local and wide-area network support functions. I believe my thirty years of experience, most recent in my quality assurance job, also performed as, I performed as product, production managers, supervisor, consultant, and staff training. This all aligns with what I believe is a unique perspective and abilities for this appointment. I do feel the future of communities depend on people volunteering. It may be, it may keep me on my toes, but I'm willing to learn. It should be interesting. And although the central duty of this job or task would be to determine how to balance the public's good with private rights and interests. So, I'm up for the challenge. And now, as you may have questions of me, I ask, also have questions of you. And I hope that these questions are answered through my appointment.
Mrs. Kraut, if you'd like to wrap it up, I do have-
I am right this minute.
I do have a question for you when we go back around to the questions and I'll be happy to, at that time, we can hear your questions. Okay, I'll give you more time after we go back around. I'm assuring you that I have a question for you.
Okay.
But I just want to move along through the other applicants. Please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Ronald Raeder.
Good evening, Mayor and council. A little bit about myself, my name is Ron Raeder. I'm on the Board of Directors at a local, San Geronimo Hospital. Also serve on the committees, the Finance Committee, the city, the city planning, excuse me, the Community Planning Committee and Major A Committee of that hospital. The latter two are planning committees that, that oversee the expansion of the hospital and future expansion of the hospital. I also serve with the city as a hearing officer and a member of the local Rotary, on the local Rotary Board of Directors. A little bit of philosophy, very quickly. I think planning for the city's future and present is vital in the success of the city, so the city can go forward. Must be concerned about the footprint that growth will bring and also the concern that the strain on our infrastructure, environment, and lifestyle might bring. I seem to last, lost my last page. Anyway, I have considerable knowledge about planning. I started off with Ralph's Grocery Company and Management Information System and did planning for stores, locations, size of stores, et cetera. So, I've been involved in planning for quite a while and would like the opportunity to serve on this Planning Commission and see where it takes us into the future. Oh, I also am a member of graciously, was graciously appointed to the Ten Year General Plan Committee. So, thank you for that and thank you for your, your thoughtfulness in putting me on that committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raeder. And one more, I believe, correct?
Bob Tinker.
Mayor, members, council. And I served on the Planning Commission from 2013 through last December. I did not pursue it because I thought I was going to travel and those plans were changed. I am retired, I retired as a battalion chief from Cal Fire here in the Riverside Unit. One of the things I found that serving on the Planning Commission is, it's all not cookies and cream. You're, on one side, you have private industry, on the other side, you have the community industries, and somewhere along the line, you have to find a happy mix. And sometimes you have to ask some really tough questions that you are not very popular with. I don't have a problem with that. I served eight years on the Beaumont Cherry Valley Recreation and Park District, so I'm under, I understand how that system works. But one of the things that concerns me, and I've lived here for over thirty years, so I've seen this town go from, from nothing to where it's at today, is we've got to develop a plan to where we mix the community with some type of theme and that we make sure that we allow our citizens to, to progress, our community to progress, in a safe manner. And you say, "Well, what does that mean?" Well, you know, you don't want to have a residential area, and I'm sure Councilman Laura knows what I'm talking about. Let's not have a community and go down and put a paint shop in the middle of it. We have to stay on top of that stuff. The other thing that down the road we need to look at is we need to enhance our agreements with the Beaumont Cherry Valley Recreation and Park District and our own Community Services District. And I'm not talking about combining them. But if we enhance those and with Beaumont School District, we can have a stronger community, not only with development. You know, everything around in the Planning Commission is not involved with development. We need to look at how the development is going to affect our community. If we're requiring parks, who's going to take care of the parks? If we're going to build a school? But how can we marry all of this development together to enhance the community? And that's where I think we need to be. I appreciate your time and thank you very much.
Thank you. I would like to ask a general question of each, one, the same question of each applicant. Have them go through, give them a few minutes to respond. And, Ms. Kraut, you can take your time to ask us questions if you'd like. And I'd like to bring Mr. Tinker back up because I'd like to do this in reverse order. So, this one should be an easy slam dunk for you, being on the Planning Commission before.
Maybe.
Okay. So, what is your role as a Planning Commissioner in relationship to our roles on council? And if you're in, if you're in a position to make a decision that is not in the direction, the mission that the council at the time had decided we wanted to go, how would you balance that?
I think the Planning Commission should make a decision irrespective of the council's direction. If the Planning Commission views a project and says, "We recommend or we don't recommend," the position of the council should not have an effect on the Planning Commission's decision. That we make the decision, if it goes forward to you and, and that's happened and you say, "Well, I, we don't agree with them," that's fine, but that's how the check and balance comes in. I, I really believe that the Planning Commission is not a tool of the council. It's a tool of the community. So, if we, if we approve something and it goes down and the council says, "No, that's not what we're going to do," that's why you're the City Council.
I, I think what I'm asking you is, if the council decided as a whole that we would like to see the city move in a certain direction, do you, I'm not asking you on an issue where you think we're going to overturn what you voted on. I'm just asking you, do you, how, do you think the council has a role in providing that guidance and mission for, for the Planning Commission?
Oh, by all means.
Okay.
I think you set the direction and the tone of the community. And I think it's the county, the Planning Commission's job to work with that tone or direction.
Okay, and so if you have an issue where it may, you may not agree with the tone and direction that the council has set and you want to vote or move in a different direction with your, I mean, that's kind of happened to you in, in the past.
It has, yes.
Okay.
I, I think, this is where it gets difficult because the, the Planning Commission understands the direction of the council. "We want to go this direction." And the Planning Commission, based on the information available to them at the time, says, "This is not compatible." Well, sometimes disagreement is good. But I don't think the Planning Commission should be a rubber stamp for the council. But if the council provides direction, I know the Planning Commission will lean towards that. But we should also be independent enough to make a decision whether we think it's the council's direction or not.
Thank you, Mr. Tinker. Mr. Raeder, I'll let you answer that question. Same question.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe ultimately the council is, makes an ultimate decision. I think there can be agreements or disagreements among the Planning Commission members. But at the end of the day, there's, should be a recommendation come out of there about an issue that might be ultimately important to the, to the council and that, that might, we might be as a commission, more of an advisory tool towards the, the council than what the last gentleman said. There may be a check and balances there and I don't disagree with that. But at the end of the day, sometimes the City Council has to make the decision and I'm good with that. I don't take my toys and go home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raeder. Ms. Kraut.
Thank you. Can I ask my questions before I answer yours?
You sure may.
It's kind of funny.
Okay.
My questions are, what do you expect of me and my roles and responsibilities? What is the source and limits of my authority? And who will I work with and how do I make decisions?
Okay.
You don't have to answer them, that's, that's what I'd like to know once I'm on there.
I think the question that I've asked sort of give, should give you some, some guidance into the role that a Planning Commissioner plays.
Yes, it just is.
So, go ahead and answer my question and if you still want us to sort of elaborate, I don't mind trying.
No, that was more like a rhetorical situation, but-
Got it. Okay.
But as far as what the other two gentlemen have said, I agree. You are the council, you're the governing body of the city. You have these resources of committees that are doing different things for the city. If there's a difference of opinion or an interest is not being satisfied, no one should actually come with a personal agenda. You have to look at, as I said earlier, the balance between the public and the interests of the city. So, it would still be your call and there could be disagreements and agreements, which there should be, because everybody can't be carbon copy of each one. So, we respect each other, respect what you want as a leading body.
Thank you. Mr. Hill.
I believe the council should be most informed about what, what's best and have all the facts. So, their say should be final. But I think my role should be to communicate what I hear from the community as well as to relay information that they might not have of why those decisions were made. Kind of like I said, as, as a volunteer, I'm not going to be making the decisions, but I'll be glad to relay information, listen, and be, be part of the decisions. I think being able to communicate with, with so many people if decisions aren't liked or are liked, or to be able to voice the, the community's opinions will be my role.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. And Mr. Cooper.
You, as a City Council, develop a general plan. General plan should guide the Planning Commission and where they go. I think, if I'm understanding you correctly, you're suggesting as you evolve, as, as time goes on and you wish to adjust because of circumstances in the city, I believe what you're asking is, should the Planning Commission or Planning Commissioners follow suit? And I think that's perfectly reasonable. I, I don't have a problem with that. I, I think if there was some radical departure, I would, I would, I would have to step back and say, "Why?" And I don't know that I would necessarily even, I would just want, I would just want more information from the City Council if, if, you know, it's, it's okay to, everyone evolves. Everyone's going to change, circumstances change. You have to go with, I want to say, go with the flow. You have, you have to, you have to adjust as you go along. But if something were just to dramatically change, no. Tomorrow, we should start being a no-growth city. I, I would question that. What's, what's the, what's the thought process behind that? But other than that, I think it's perfectly reasonable and I think, I think both, both agents, both portions of the agency should work together.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Mr. Martinez, did you have questions for applicants?
Yeah, I can do the same.
You want to? Want to shake it up a little bit? We'll have Rosalyn go first and then Mr. Hill.
Sure, that's fine. They're going to throw me off.
And then Mr. Raeder? Is that all right?
Yep, that's great. And Ms. Kraut? In a committee where you have to vote, your vote's necessary to make a decision, how would you deal with the other four members in a situation where you might have minority vote or, or opinion? In other words, the other four may not be agreeing with you and you're strong with your opinion. How would you deal with those other members? Is there in a situation where your vote is one of the five and many?
And everyone else is not in agreement with me?
Yeah.
That's like being on a jury. You can't hang us, so I would have to say. Oh, I'd have to give grace to it and I'd have to see just how weighty it is for me to keep my stance on whatever it is that we're discussing. It depends on what that would be too as well. So, I'd have to respect everybody else's opinion, just as they would respect mine. I don't know if, you know, we want to walk off the committee because you can't agree, but-
And what do you bring to the, to the commission that's unique, maybe from the other candidates you've heard today?
On, on the level of looking at ideas and looking at structures, looking at the way the city is being built, like I say, I dealt with the county of San Bernardino with major, major developments in different areas, including locale sites, data center moves, things of this sort. I also have a, a, I want to call it, way of being able to observe and quantify and qualify and detail, detail information that has to be checks and balances and this sort. So, I think that would be one of the things, because I love to see how things work, why they work, what they're doing, what they're not doing. And also looking at, like, the balance of the people versus the city itself. Because I have a love for the people as well and I have a love for the city as well. And so, I want to see both happening that could be benefiting everybody. So, that's where I feel.
All right, I thank you. And then-
Mr. Hill. Oh, I'm sorry, were you done with this? Do you have another question for Mrs. Kraut?
No, no. I just, thank you. Did you want to go back and forth?
No, no, you go ahead and he'll let you go through each, each applicant.
I figured that, so, is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll do the same like we did with the mayor. We'll just ask the questions as we go through and I'll get mine out of the way. So, Mr. Hill, again, how do you deal with a committee or a commission that might be in disagreement with you?
I'm sure we can expect disagreements through a process like this. The best way to do it would be to debate, you know, explain your stance and I'll explain mine and we'll, we'll get to the bottom of it and what makes the most sense once we have all the facts on the table and discuss why, why what would be best is best.
Okay, and what would you bring that's unique to the commission?
I think I'd bring a different perspective, being, you know, a young family member, somebody who not just lives here, but works here as well and who has his ear to the community as well as I do. I think I've brought some things to this community already. Not only have I taught here, I've coached football here. I'm a big part of the Beaumont Men's Club Rugby Team as well as the youth rugby team. So, I definitely, you know, I can see what, what families need and want in this community.
Thank you. Mr. Cooper? Would you like me to repeat for you? First one is just how do you deal with a commission that disagrees with you or you might be the minority?
I believe, I believe in arguing your position. I think once, once everyone has heard what everyone has to say, if the group is, if the group is- if the group is moving towards a consensus, I think that's the way the, the dissenting person should, should go. It's not, most of these decisions are not life-ending, you know, they're, they're decisions about what's in the best interest of the community. You argue what you think is in the best interest of the community. If the group you're working with doesn't agree with you, move forward. Do the best you can.
And what unique quality would you bring to the commission?
I, I spent a lifetime working with all sorts of different groups of people, and I, I think I worked pretty well with them. I'm not, I don't bring, I very rarely bring biases of any sort into a meeting, into a, into a conversation. I want to listen to what people have to say. I want to listen to what, how they feel. I want to understand their sincerity about what they're, what they believe, and then I want to try to work with them to get a solution that, that works. Currently, I work with a homeowners board in Sundance. I'm, I'm the president of that board. I work with every angry, angry person in Sundance wants to see me. So, I have, I have a bit of a shield, and, you know, and, but, but you can't, you can't be angry with people. You've just got to listen to them, hear what they have to say, deal with it, and move on. You know, try to get a solution.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tinker.
Yes, sir.
I've seen how you've worked on the first question.
I don't know if that's good or bad.
Well, it's, it's good. But do you have any comments on that, and how you may have dealt with members of your commission?
You know, I, when I was on the planning commission, there were times that we were 4-1, 3-2, and a lot of times when you take the initial vote, you're, everybody perceives something a little differently. And then you have to sit back and say, okay, and, and we learned to talk to each other and say, okay, why are you voting this way? Well, I see it this way. Okay. And pretty soon, as things start to come out, you realize that maybe you're perceiving it different than what's really meant. And, and, and I mean, I can tell you, we had some knockdown dragouts at night, but in the end, we were able to come to consensus, because you have to sit there, you have to put the personalities aside, and you have to look at the facts. And you have to not be the N B., not in my backyard, I don't want this. Why are we voting yes? Why are we voting no? And we have to realize that we're based on the facts, not on personalities. And we learned to, and I can tell you, the last group I was with, we're pretty diverse, and we had some pretty good disagreements, but we always came to consensus, because we turned around and listened to each other, and tried not to be prejudicial, like, say, well, okay, I don't agree with you, but this is why. And it, it, it worked out.
Any unique quality you may want to add?
Well, you know, I spent two and a half years on the board. I also was eight years on the Park and Recreation District. I have, I live in an old part of Beaumont, so I have no allegiance to anybody, and I think I have the ability to sit back and look at both sides of it. You know, I've been involved with this city in a lot of things, and, and the last time was our Public Safety Memorial, and I'm telling you, if you don't think you didn't get a lot of controversy on that, you, you have to look at everything. And I, and I have the ability to sit back, and, and the other thing is, I'm not afraid to ask tough questions. If it needs to be asked, I'm going to ask it, because that's what the people want. You're not going to just push it through and go, well, this is because I'm X Y B builder, or I know the mayor, or I know this. I don't care. I'm going to ask the tough questions. So, that's where I'm at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Rader. Yes, Mr.?
Yes, Councilman Martinez, what was that first question?
The first one was on the committees that you are, have been, or?
Yeah, I have served, the beauty of a committee is that there's usually five-plus members coming from five different life experiences, and you learn to deal with sometimes rejection, or learn, I like to learn, because I, a lot of life is a learning experience. So, if I'm on a committee, I like to hear other people's point of view, because, you know, I don't want to get tunnel vision. It's not all about me. I've always said, public service is about serving the community, not about me. I'm just one of those surrogates. And so, whatever disagreements I might have with other committee members, I hope it's a learning, learning experience. I give my, I'll put my two cents in, and, and they'll, they need to decide, or they might change my mind, I might change their mind. It might be a jury-type situation, but, but I'm not afraid to give my opinion and, and learn, and I think that's important.
And how about unique qualifications or?
I'll be experienced, experienced on committees, experienced on planning, as I mentioned before. If you read my application, I'll give some ideas of what I've done in the past, and how I approach planning, what the effect planning has on the community, and, and my lifestyle. And, and I think one of my passions, and I know everybody in here the same way, is we love this city. I came here 12 years ago, and I was enthralled with the small-town image that it gives, and yet the friendliness of the people, and the, the fact that people, a person like me can come and, and, you know, get a fair shake and, and do some positive things for the community. So, I'm not sure that's unique, but that's where I come from.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Mr. Laura, you're up.
We're good.
You're good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any comments, questions?
No, I'm pretty good. I think I have enough to make decisions.
Okay, so we will take a break at 7:40, and we'll come back at 7:50. 10 minutes is good enough?
Yeah.
Does that work?
Sure.
Okay. We will call the meeting back to order at 7:50. We need our tallyer.
We shouldn't have called it back.
I have the tally sheet, I can start.
Okay, well, we're going to put it up on the board. I think we'll just do it that way.
So, we're just doing three, right?
Yeah. Yeah, why don't you go ahead and write it up there? Anyone volunteer to go first?
Sure, I'll, I can, I'll volunteer.
Okay.
Yeah, I have three for Tinker, two for Rader, and one for Cooper.
Yeah, three for Tinker, two for Cooper, one for Croupp.
And I had three for Mr. Hill, two for Ms. Croupp, and a one for Mr. Rader. All right? That was close. All right.
Very close.
Mr. Tinker will be our new planning commissioner. Thank you. You know, I want to make a comment, and it almost seems like it's a canned comment, because in the last number of appointments for almost everything we're doing, as you can see with the, the direction we voted, there is a, we're getting some good candidates, and it's not easy to, to make these choices. And the big thing is, we're getting a lot of candidates, which I think is a good sign in the city that people want to, to get involved, and every one of you had, had a strong connection and involvement in our city, and so that made it that much harder for me anyways. But I wanted to say that, and if either of my colleagues would like to make a comment, now's the time.
Yeah. To, as Mayor White said, it just, it never ceases to amaze me, not only the number of candidates, but the quality of candidate that we get, and the dedication they have to just improving life in this city. I think we're very fortunate and blessed to live here in the city of Beaumont. There's a tremendous group of, of folks that live here, and you can tell by the, the members that we have on the Economic Development Committee, on the Finance Committee, on the General Plan Committee. I mean, they're, it's very, very high-quality folks, and I appreciate the time that you take and the interest that you have in our community.
And just on that note, too, I'd rather have a difficult decision with close numbers than one person up there and, you know. So, I do thank all those that applied, and, and encourage you to keep up volunteering and getting involved with the city, and there'll be more opportunities, believe me. And if not, maybe we'll create some. But we'll look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
And Mr. Tinker, you will be serving, I believe, till the end of, is it 2019?
It's actually 20, December 2020. There was a typo in there.
Oh, it's December of 2020?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We will now move on to item?
What's, Mayor?
Yes.
What's the policy on the alternate? Do we have a policy for the alternate commission?
No, I think we, we come back and?
So, someone?
We need a replacement, we come back, yeah. Now, we'll move on to item 15, which is Presentation of an Ordinance of the City of Beaumont, Amending Title VIII, Chapter 8.32 of the City of Beaumont Municipal Code pertaining to the Feeding of Feral Cats. And do we have any public comments on this item?
Yes, we do.
Okay. I'll open the public comments at 7:54.
Ann Connors?
Sorry. Move your bubbles right now.
I have one quick question, and then I have a couple of comments. The question is, are the enforcement of this and the code governing the number of animals allowed per household enforced by the nuisance abatement process rather than fees? Is it the nuisance base, abatement process that this is under?
Okay, and I don't want to take up your time, so why don't you go ahead and give us your comments, and then I'll, I'll direct staff to answer your question.
Okay. I wanted to thank you for listening to one person bringing a, a problem before you, which probably could help a lot of people if they were willing to come down here. I'm sure that other people have had this problem, or will in the future, and avoiding problems is a good thing. And I know you, you already know that I want you to get this into the code, but I wanted to tell you that you have a great staff who solved my immediate problem, and they were kind, efficient, and patient, and, believe me, I tested their patience, and it's very much appreciated, both the council and the staff, and everyone that worked with me and helped me. I really thank you and appreciate it.
Thank you. And Mr. Pardon, can you address that question to be answered?
Yes, if you look on Section 8.32.045, it does say that we declare the feeding to be a nuisance and a violation of the code. So, it would be under the nuisance provision.
It's tedious to read the whole thing, so.
You bet.
Do we have any other public comments?
None.
So, I'll close the public comments at 7:56, and are there any questions, comments from council? Okay, Mr. Laura?
Ms. Connor, thank you for bringing this to our attention. I appreciate that very much. A lot of folks, just like you said, don't want to, to come up, or they, they don't have the time, but you've made a special effort to do that. You know, I believe you, you first brought this up on February 21st at our council meeting, and so I just wanted to commend staff, Chief Talis, for taking this so seriously, getting on it, and then four months later, we've got an ordinance that we're approving to address the situation. It just speaks volumes of, of you and your staff, so, and also, City Manager Pardon, thank you for your efforts in that, and Mr. Pinkney, I appreciate your review and, and getting that done. I think it happened very, relatively quickly, and it addressed the problem specifically, so thank you for that.
Mr. Martinez?
No, I just want to commend the public, and especially you, for coming forward. It gives you a lot of hope to others that might not have done anything like this, and maybe we'll do the same, so I appreciate that.
If there's no other comments, I'll entertain a motion for this item.
I'll make a motion to approve item 15, the Ordinance Amending Title VIII, Chapter 8.32 of the City of Beaumont Municipal Code pertaining to the feeding of feral cats.
At Mayor Point of Order?
This is asking for direction to staff.
Right. So, we're looking for direction on this one, and then if this looks good, we'll come back. First reading August 1, second reading will be August 15.
Looks good.
I think you have our direction then.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Number 16 is Ordinance for an Extension on the Moratorium on the Issuance of Telecommunication Facilities Within the Public Right-of-Way.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is the moratorium extension that was previously discussed at the last meeting in the schedule to adopt a new ordinance. This extends it for 10 months and, and a few days. So, with that, we ask that you hold a public, a public hearing, approve ordinance for 10-month and 15-day extension of ordinance 1086, being an interim urgency ordinance of the City of Beaumont enacting a temporary moratorium on the issuance of any permits for new and relocated wireless telecommunications facility in the public right-of-way pursuant, pursuant to Government Code 65858. So, this gives staff a chance to keep researching and bring back to you proposed ordinance.
And just real quickly, if you could summarize the type of items that we are putting a moratorium on? We don't need to go into all the detail, but just, it's not cell towers that?
It's cell towers in the right-of-way. So, those small cell towers that we're seeing requests for that would go on streetlights or just a pole in the right-of-way. It's not the private property cell towers.
Okay, and we need to, we need time to study this, or?
To make sure that our streets, where we're safe, that we have a proper ordinance for, you know, any concerns and permitting processes. We don't even have a process right now for how to process these kind of requests.
Okay. Any questions before the public hearing?
Just a quick one. Are there any applications currently that are waiting to be approved that would go in before this?
Yes, we did receive some applications for an encroachment permit for mobility. However, we do not have any complete applications, so it would be subject to this moratorium and wait until we have the ordinance to process. So, we don't have any that we would process outside of this, the new ordinance that would go through.
Thank you. Mr. Laura?
And the direction is still to look at some type of a planning entitlement initially for these submittals, and then move on to building permit?
We have not even brought you back those options yet. So, we have, we will, we plan on having a meeting as we develop it. We're planning on coming back to council in September to look at those options to see which direction council wants to go. So, we're, we're looking at different cities and what they've done. We're having a hard time with that, because many people haven't dealt with that yet, but we have found a few good ones. There are some laws that possibly could limit what we can do, and may have to be looking at an option to make sure it is a ministerial approval, and doesn't, doesn't require planning commission or anything like that, if, if we want to stay on top of it, if we want to process something based on your direction, but we may have to go back and change it if the laws change in the future, because there is some Senate bills or Assembly bills that are on the floor that would require it to be ministerial.
You're kind of on the bleeding edge of this, so.
I'm trying.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you. I started reading up on it, and not that much out there on it.
No, there's not.
Other than it's a concern.
Yes.
Okay, let's open the public hearing at 8:02. Do we have any requests to speak?
None.
So, I'll close the public hearing at 8:02. Now, when you brought this up last time, it was, it was new to me, and my first thought was, I think most of us, why do we need to do this? And, you know, you've raised some issues, but when I was at the last League of Cities meeting last month, or last week, there, there are a lot of cities that are worried about this, and I didn't, I didn't get that from, from you as much as I did from listening to all the other cities that are worried that this is a, it could be a power grab by the state to come in and, and get hold of some revenue that should be going to the city, that it's, it's, cities are concerned that they're going to lose local control of some of their areas, and then if we don't do this right, we may be, you know, in a bad position that we need to avoid. So, it became a lot more serious. If you could speak to that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, the concern, obviously, is if we don't have a policy or a, or not a policy, an ordinance to address these, it would fall under our current code under encroachment permit. permit, which means that there's no limitations. We could have ten on one block. We could have no requirement to try and co-locate. So the land use control is the issue. The, the fee with encroachment permits, they do have, at least the one I've dealt with, does have a permit through the CPUC, so we cannot charge a franchise fee. So there, even with this new code, the only fees we would be collecting would be for application fees. So there's no rentals in the right-of-way like you would if they, for instance, the tower on City Hall, they pay, they have a lease agreement. So in the right-of-way with the CPUC, we don't get any funds for a lease agreement or a franchise fee. So there's not, I'm not sure, the discussion on where the fees go. Obviously, they have to get their state CPUC license, but we would not collect any fees. The only fees we would collect would be whatever application process we come up with. Again, the concern is, without regulation, they can go anywhere. Right now, we, our current zoning ordinance for cell towers do not allow them in residential zones. This would allow someone to put possibly a cell tower in front of, you know, anyone's house in the right-of-way, and so we want to look at where, what areas do we want to limit it to arterial streets and not in interior, you know, front, you know, housing-loaded streets. So maybe we do allow it in residential zones, but it has to be a non-loaded street. So where no houses front that street, you know, do we want to put a limit to how close they can be to each other so that we don't end up with, you know, five on the same street? Also, maybe encouraging co-location. So the biggest concern is the lack of control we would have if we don't have an ordinance in place.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions for staff? So I'll entertain a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance, a ten-month and fifteen-day extension of ordinance ten eighty-six being an interim urgency ordinance of the City of Beaumont enacting a temporary moratorium on the issuance of any permits and new and relocated wireless telecommunications facilities within the public right-of-way pursuant to government code six five eight five eight.
I'll second.
Councilwoman Martinez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lara?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. All right. Item number seventeen is the draft financial report, May 2017, for discussion and review.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I am here to present to you a draft of a financial for May and year-to-date of eleven months of 2017 fiscal year for the city, so that you can take a look at the presentation and the figures as well. But it is a draft, subject to change. But to give you an idea of what reporting we plan on presenting to council on a monthly basis, and so I wanted to just quickly run through kind of the setup and what is in the financial report that I've given you. The first thing to consider is the financial structure, and the structure is, is a little complex, but I tried to simplify it so that when you look at the city financial report in total, which you do not have in front of you today, we have the different types of funds and then the types of funds, more specifically, that fall below them. The biggest funds that we deal with, of course, are the general funds, and so that report is, is in front of you, and then our enterprise fund for the sewer. So since those are the two largest of the funds that we have on a day-to-day basis, those are the reports that I've presented for a draft, for a going-forward basis. Each one of the funds went away. How about that? Each, each one of the funds has a set of financial statements that can be prepared at any time, complete or incomplete. I can always print the reports. The reports that we're going to be providing to the Finance Committee on a monthly basis are more detailed than what I'm providing to council. For the Finance Committee, they'll be getting a balance sheet and an income statement that shows budget to actual for each and every fund of the city. So they'll have oversight over all of the financial reports. They'll get a fund transfer summary report. They'll get a, what's called a treasurer's report, it's like an overall activity report, and then they'll get the end-of-month bank reconciliations to review at each one of their monthly meetings. The intent is for them to spend time with the details in order to give council assurance that when they get the higher-level reports that I've, I've drafted, that you have some comfort in knowing that all the numbers have already been looked at and, and any changes or recommendations made by that committee have already been taken into account when it comes to council. So for the city council, we have provided an income statement with a budget to actual for the general fund. That's general operations of the city, overall operational activities. Then we also did a comparative income statement for the month and year-to-date, comparing this fiscal year seventeen to last fiscal year sixteen, so that you'd have some way of comparing the information that's been provided to you. Then we did the same type of format for the wastewater sewer fund, so you'd have those same setups. They look similar. In the budget to actual report, you have the original budget and a current total budget. The difference is for any budget adjustments that have been approved by the council. We could have changes during the year. That way, you can see what the original budget was that was approved, and then what's in effect at that particular point in time if we've had budget adjustments posted. We have the month activity, just the activity of that specific month, the year-to-date, which is from seven one, because we have a fiscal year, through to the end of that month. That's being reported, and then the variance. The variance is the total current budget compared to the year-to-date. So it's that comparison of where we stand at this point in time for the year. Then it's a favorable or unfavorable. Sometimes this column will mix people up because what you think should be a positive looks negative or negative is positive. So really, I just tried to say if a budget for revenue is more than the actual, it's unfavorable. That means you haven't gotten all the money that you thought you were going to get, at least at that point in time. If an expense is higher in the budget than it is to actual, that's favorable because you didn't spend the money that you had budgeted or that you haven't spent it yet. So that is the difference. Then we tried to do the row information in kind of a summary presentation. We have the revenues with their higher-level groupings, and then we have the expenses, and then we have the transfers with the net effect of that fund. So that's the first report.
Now, let me ask you a question.
Sure.
I, are we, we are considering this, I think, as far as receiving file and to give you direction on what we like about or don't like about the reports, as opposed to digging into the numbers and start asking you questions, why the numbers...
Right.
...are a certain, a certain way.
Right, because the numbers also are not completely finalized yet. That's why I put draft on it. We still have some, some entries that we're cleaning up, moving around, making sure that it's as accurate as possible. So next month, I would come to council. You would have the same reports or edited as you, as you wanted it changed, but you would have the finalized numbers for May.
Okay, so then unless there's an objection, why don't you go ahead and go through the, all of the reports, and then at the end, we can provide comments and ask questions?
Okay. So the, the first report is, as I said, it's, as I have it summarized here, the setup for the original budget, current budget, month activity, year-to-date, and then the differences. When there was something that I thought was significant or that I wanted council to know, I added a footnote. So on this particular report, I have three footnotes. The first is on our cost recovery revenues. Right now, the actual is higher than we had even budgeted for the year, and I am working on an analysis of the details in that grouping because I don't believe it all belongs there, which will bring it back in line with the budget. The second is the miscellaneous revenues are very high compared to budget. That's because of the three million dollar settlement that we received from the Heartland agreement that we signed. So that is significantly higher because we hadn't budgeted for that three million dollars. And the third footnote is on other financing sources. It's higher than budgeted, and for the same kinds of reasons, I'll be doing a little more detailed analysis to find out what's in there and see if it belongs somewhere else. Bless you. In order to clean that up and make that look more in line with what the budget was. And if it's going to stay higher, then I'll have an explanation for what is making that up, similar to what I have for the miscellaneous revenues. The personnel costs, operating costs, and capital improvements, with the year not quite complete, those may still come up lower than what we budgeted, which would be a good thing, but I've, I've left out any indication of where we're going to land at the end of the year. And then the transfers. Those are transfers coming from other funds if it's positive, and if it's negative, it's a transfer that is going from this fund to another one. So for the general fund, there are positive transfers that are coming in from other funds. The biggest part of the six million dollar year-to-date activity of transfers is the five million dollar transfer that was authorized earlier. The second report, the second page then, is our comparative statement for the general fund. It's basically the same rows, it's the same information summary. It's just that it's showing May of 2016 versus May of 2017 and the difference, and then the year-to-date through May of sixteen and the year-to-date through May seventeen and the difference. So we can see where we stand in alignment from where we stood at the same time in the prior year. The variances here, some of them are pretty significant. The first one, though, number one, my little footnotes for taxes. If you look at sixteen and seventeen, the numbers are almost two million dollars different, but it's really just timing. When you look at the year-to-date numbers for the two years, they're much more similar. In sixteen, some of the monies were recognized in April, in May, but in the current year, we got those monies recorded in April, so we got them a little bit earlier. So it's almost a flip effect if you looked at April's report. Licensing, in the prior year, the business licenses were sent out late, so it changed the revenue recognition. So this year, it looks much higher than it was last year, and that's because of the timing of those being sent. Permits are much higher. That's because we do have public works now operational for the full year, so we have quite a bit more in permits. Intergovernmental, that one may or may not change. It's usually just grants that come in from other government agencies. Charges for service, that's way up, and part of that is the public works, but I'm also looking into that one to make sure that we haven't miscategorized some of our income as the charges for service. Fines and forfeitures also looks like it's higher in the current year, but the year-to-date is the other way around, so we're working on figuring out what the timing issues are on that and if perhaps we have monies that are categorized in the wrong grouping now, too. Cost recovery's the same as it was for the other. We have to figure out what's in there and why and see if we need to change some of the accounting for those items. Miscellaneous revenues, that's really our three million in the current year. And other financing sources, again, 2015, sixteen had a really large number, and I'll have to go back and figure out what that is, as well as then determine if the sixteen, seventeen numbers are an accurate reflection for financing sources. The cost, the expenses, while we have personnel services up, no, down, see, I did it backwards. The personnel services costs are down a little bit year-to-date and, and for the month, but they should catch up, I believe, when we get to the end of June, because June had a three-pay period timeframe in it, which will make that bump up a little bit. The operating costs are, are also up, but that's also related to public works being in operation for the whole year and more work is being done there. So the revenues that have gone up do coincide with the costs that are going up, and we're working on matching out some of that. Our capital improvements, we're making some capital investments, not a great deal, but that's when we started doing that, was this year. So we have some capital improvements, that expense is up as well. And that's how we're doing the income statement comparison between the two. We've also done the exact same two formats, but for the sewer fund, so that you can see what it is we have included in the sewer activities. The sewer is more than just the sewer operations. Sewer fund actually is made up of three different funds underneath it. One is the operations, which is day-to-day. It's the billing to the, to the residents, the customers, and just the regular operation of the sewer. It also includes our mitigation or developer impact fees that go into the sewer program and are held aside for capital projects or future capital projects. And also, the third fund underneath sewer is for capital projects. So any of the larger costs that we have that are more of a capital level cost are going to be captured in that fund specifically. So when we put the three together, we get the full wastewater fund group. And so we've combined all three into these same reports. When we look at the charges for service, right now, our budget is eight million, but we only have six point six million in revenue. So that's because we have one more revenue cycle to record, and that will be for June, and those are done every other month. So when we do the billing for May-June and include it, then the revenues are going to be much closer to where we have it budgeted right now. It should hit those same targets. Miscellaneous revenues, right now, that is just interest income and a few other small things that we have some recovery for. That actually is going to also increase, and then that will be more in line with budget as well. Our expenses, we didn't get the, the individual into the payroll as early as we'd hoped, so we have kind of a windfall of funds we didn't spend for personnel that we'd expected. We've done more work to get some of the operational things moving, some of the other things that have been ignored at the sewer plant. So we have operational costs that have gone up, but we had hoped to get a lot more of the capital costs done in fiscal year seventeen, and that didn't happen. So we're not spending nearly as much as we'd originally thought we would in budget year seventeen for capital costs. That means that those funds, though, will be rolling over and probably will still be that or more that'll be available for capital projects next year for the sewer plant. The last report I've given you also is for wastewater, but it's also the month-to-month comparison and the year-to-year comparison, so you can see where we stood this month last year and where we are now. We're working on being consistent on when we record our income, when we do the billing, and as we get more consistent with that, those revenues should be in line as we go along. It should always be the even months that those appear. And then the expenses will start being in line, too, now that we have staff that's dedicated to the sewer plant as we move away from some of the contracts that we've had ongoing. So those also will be kind of leveling out, and we'll be able to see them as we continue doing the month-to-month and year-to-year comparisons and see how the activity changes for the sewer plant. And those are the reports that we're sticking with right now, so I don't know if you have other questions or if you would rather see more information, less information, higher level, lower level.
All of the above.
All of the above.
Mr. Lara, did you want to get, you want to start? Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I just, I did have a comment. When I look at, at my county budget for my department, what I find a column that helps me when I'm looking at, at projected potential revenues is we, I know where I am today, but based on that trend or based on where I am today, if that continues, this is where I'll be at the end of the fiscal year, just so I can see if there's, you know, if we need to make maybe mid-year budget adjustments, it kind of helps with that. So if we could see a column like that on your, like your general fund for your sewer, the first, the...
The first report.
Yeah.
Sure.
And, yeah, obviously, we don't need to see it on the month-to-month comparison, but just on that one for the city, for a general fund and then sewer?
Mm-hmm. We can do that. We can add a column there so we can see, probably the first part of the year, it'll be close to the same as the budget that we already have in place, unless we have some kind of circumstances that come up that might change something. But definitely, we can add a column so we can see that and we can keep track of a, a projection against budget, too.
And then the other thing that helps me when maybe we look at, at mid-year is bar graphs to show, say, like prior five-year history of, I'll just, this is what I know is permit fees, right?
Sure.
So you can kind of see where the trends were, what's happened, just so you can kind of, when we start looking at the next fiscal year, we kind of know where we're heading or... So it'd be, it didn't have to be every time that you give the report. Maybe it's just a mid-year or quarterly or something like that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, Mr. Martinez.
Oh, well, I was just going to mention what he had asked about that extra column. That was a good idea.
Okay.
He kind of did it when you were verbally talking, but I... He kind of did it when you were verbally talking, but I was looking for indications as you, warning indications like this is not going well, or this is kind of like a prediction. So that was one comment. On the PowerPoint you had on there, some of my questions were answered on that. You get that to us as well? Because I don't have that PowerPoint.
Oh, absolutely, we can do that.
Okay. And, and I like the fact that you're including more specifics with the financial audit committee.
Absolutely.
Have you started that? Have you started that already?
No, that'll be at the meeting that's upcoming on August the 7th, they will get their first...
Oh, okay.
Here is your book for the month of May.
That was my question, to see how that's going, so we'll, we'll come back to that later.
A number of reports are available that Malana shared with us, which is, with a lot of detailed information, which, which is good to see, so...
Right, but now it's going to be populated with data and something that we can look at. So what'll happen is, the first meeting in August, well, the finance committee meeting in August, they'll get all the reports, we'll talk through it, we'll look at it, if there's something that's unusual, and I need to do research, I may have to adjust something or make some explanations, then council will get that higher level, but that same period of time, so that you'll know that it's already been reviewed by the, by the committee, and we'll continue doing that then, moving forward.
Well, it's an excellent plan, so we'll see how that goes, that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
As we know, when missed, when building permits and code enforcement, code ordinances come up, Mr. Lark gets all excited. I haven't, I haven't figured out what excites Mr. Martinez yet, but we still have time. When you start talking dollar numbers and reports, that's what I do every day, so I have a lot of questions for you, and bear with me, they're all pretty much short-answer questions.
Okay.
What you're showing us here, you indicated that the finance committee is going to get a more detailed report than what we get. What are we seeing here? Is this our report, or is this going to be the finance committee report?
This would be your report.
Okay.
Unless there's additional information, or more drill down, or a different funding, or something else more specific that you would find more helpful.
Okay. And, by the way, I'm not going to even go into any of the dollar numbers, so don't worry about that.
Okay.
Just the report. So the next question I have, this is end of May 31st, so it's the end of the month of May, and today is July.
Yes.
What is the timeframe of, when will the finance committee usually see a report like this? Will they see it in June, and then we will see, after they've gone over it, we will then see the, the end-of-the-month May report in July? Is that sort of what you're looking at, or...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and we're a little bit behind, but we'll be, as we go along, we'll hopefully catch up a little bit more. We're still having a few little hiccups here and there, trying to get caught up and get everything in line, so that we have all the, all of the information input into the system, make sure it's all accurate.
And will it make a difference that we're looking at a month from last fiscal year, as opposed to if we're in the third or fourth month of a fiscal year, is the timing going to be any different? In other words, are we going to see the, the May report in July because of your, you're straddling two fiscal years, or are we going to see, and you might see the November report in December?
Correct, and that's how that should work. We should be, what I, what we need to do is be able to close a month as a department, be sure that we're done, which, so if we get, for example, if we have May done by the second week of June, then all the reports will go to the committee at their first meeting in July.
Okay.
So by the second council meeting of July, you should also have May. So that's the timing, is we close it, go to committee, goes to council, month is done.
And are these reports generated by the new software program?
Yes.
And how much customization is there in building these reports?
Not a lot. I changed the headings so they make more sense, because they're kind of an accounting speak, but as far as the rest of it, it's coming right out of the system.
Do you have ability for charts and graphs, things like that?
No, but I can download the information into Excel and create a graph or chart, actually, very easily, so...
Okay. So one thing that we're learning in, in our report building now, is, you know, reporting on very similar numbers, year-to-date, month totals, where are we in our goals and our forecast, and, and all of that.
Mm-hmm.
And we've really began focusing on key performance indicators, or KPIs. And what we've learned, when we provide a report to somebody, is there are some things that are really important to, to a person, and I want to see that on the very first page, the very first item, and then I'll look at the backup and, and figure out where that came from. For example, the biggest question I had when I first got this is, are we ahead or behind on our budget? Now, I know that you can find that, if you work through the pages and go to the back, but what we've found has been very helpful is, up in the upper-left-hand corner, or on the first column, or on the first page of a report, right away, it tells me you're behind, you're, you know, you're overspending your budget, you're underspending your budget. Another key performance indicator would be, what you brought up here is, what's the year-to-date numbers for sales, for revenues and expenses?
Mm-hmm.
And where are we, as, as Mr. Lark brought up, as far as, you know, having an idea of where we are at, at that point in the year? And so I think if, if I could look at the report and right away see, okay, we're on budget, or we're not on budget, then I can start drilling down into the, to the different categories and figure out where we're off, where we're not on.
Okay.
One thing that would really help me, and I'm sure you can do this in, in these reports, is if the, the negative numbers weren't red.
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, because that, that, I can right away see, there's a lot of red on this one line, what is that line? So it helps me go right to the focus. And I had one more, I think, oh, I already asked, you don't, you, the software does not allow you to do dashboards, like charts and, and trend lines, without exporting it into another tool, correct?
Right, but it's really not difficult to do that. So if we had a standard dashboard we wanted to use, I could just pull the data in at the end of each month.
You do that, you do that in Excel?
Mm-hmm.
That's, okay, that works great.
Okay.
Because what Mr. Lark brought up with trend lines, you can't see it in a table.
No, you cannot.
But you can in a, in a graph, in a line chart, or in graphs, we can see right away. And then when you start bringing me those, I'll, I'll critique those a little bit, too, but...
Okay.
The numbers, like I said, I didn't even focus on them, because I didn't think that's what our goal was tonight.
Right.
So I, you're off the hook on, on that for me tonight. So are there any other questions, or additions?
Just one, one, like his comment, is, once these reports are refined, they go on the website so that citizens have access to them?
Yes, they'll go to council, and then they, they can be made available on, online. We can put, if, if it makes sense, instead of having it just as part of the council agenda packet, if you'd want to have them posted separately, I'm sure we can put them all sequentially somewhere, so they can be reviewed individually.
A thought I had, and, and I'd like you to get the finance committee's position on this, is waiting till we've, everyone has seen them and reviewed them, I would rather see them the minute they come out. If I'm a citizen, I want to see what the finance committee is going to look at before they look at it, or at the same time.
Right.
So if, if that makes sense, get, get some feedback from the finance committee, I'm sure Mr. Barton has some feedback on that idea as well. But I think if you've got them at a point where you're ready to show them to the finance committee, let's put them up online, and they may change, but then after the finance committee, then it'll change, and then when the council gets it, that way people have time to really start to digest it, and are ready to come in if they want to, and, and address that with us.
Part of their agenda for the committee itself, they, they get the package with their agenda the week before, just like council does.
Right.
So it would, they would be available in the committee packets.
But I'm assuming that we are going to have a location on the website called Reports?
A separate place.
Something like that, and then we, we can go straight there, but you wanted to...
Well, I was just gonna, I was just gonna really say what Malana said, which is that the backup for that committee will have the data available as part of that, embedded as part of that report. I think that the issue is, if we put something up, and then we take it down and put something back up again, the numbers begin to change, I think that may create more confusion.
Okay.
Or may raise more questions, so, until you get to that final report, so once council adopts that one, then I think it goes up into the transportation, I'm sorry.
Okay, then let's, let's, maybe an idea for our compromise is that, when the report is ready for finance committee, since it's going to be public document, we put it up, we put a link to it on the reports page, something like that, so that I know, and I can go see what the finance copies, finance committee's version looks like, and then once they've approved it, and you're bringing it to council as soon as you're done with it, again, the sooner I think we get it up, the better, especially since we're going to be looking at May, not till July.
Right.
So that's just, just my, my two cents.
June, you won't be able to look at the first draft until September, and that's because June has to be held open longer for the accruals, so...
That was my question.
June is going to always be a little longer before you can get that first shot at the draft on that. But then, when I do June, I'm hoping that at the same time, I also have July ready to go, because by September, I should have July.
Okay, and I have a question for you that's sort of, Mr. Pinkney, wake up, because I don't mean wake up, I'm sorry. Be prepared to jump in and tell me I can't go there, but, on the, where are we on the, the next budget process, I'm, I'm sorry, the next audit process? When are we expecting to see the next audit?
And I've been talking to the auditors, we've been, I've been providing them with information, as they've requested it for fiscal 16, and our target right now is to get the draft of the audit for review in September. So in September, I'm hoping we can get the draft audit for fiscal 16, get it through committee, get it to council, and then be able to finalize it shortly thereafter and get it issued.
Okay.
And then get fiscal 17 closed, and schedule that audit, and I would love to have the fiscal 17 audit completed the first part of January. I don't know if that's a little too aggressive, but that is in my mind what I'd like to have.
As long as we get to under 12 months, I think...
I think that helps.
We're getting there.
Yes, yes.
And Mr. Pinkney, if, if it shows up on social media tomorrow that I said, you need to wake up, I hope people realize it was just a slip.
It's okay.
The snoring was getting to me, too.
All right. So I move to receive and file, and you have our recommended ideas, I think?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. We skipped item 18, that was pulled. We'll move on to item 19, issuance of request. Item 18's been pulled.
I, I said that, well, that happens this time tonight?
Right, we're going to hold, we're going to hold off to a later meeting for that. If you'd like to speak, you can.
Okay.
You get, you get three minutes if you'd like to speak on that? Okay. Okay. Well, that's when the light turns red, right?
That's right.
Okay. Okay, you can come back when we bring it back and speak another three minutes.
See, when I'm in the back there, I can get away with this dozing issue. It's so easy.
He really was not dozing, he wasn't.
Be accountable, so, no, just kidding. Okay, so thank you for letting me kind of go for it here. Whoops, this is some, this belongs to somebody, I don't know who, but, okay. I just wanted to bring up something here, just as a preview for the engineering services, that, you know, you've inherited this, this Potrero vision from, well, going way back to different regimes, I call them regimes, but different council administrations. And so you've inherited this, and I think what I want to bring up is, how much unbelievable change is going on here? And I'm really, really concerned about the, the mindset of who you end up picking for your engineering, and how well they are adapting to changes, changes. For example, you know, just look at the, the setting of the interchange. You've got a Heartland-specific plan that has had five different renditions, or, or manifestations, it's ending up as a housing tract, but what if they were thinking about industrial back in 19, 2004, or something? Across the street, which is north, south of there, that's going to be, I need to point out, this is going to be a massive industrial-zoned area. And the writing on the wall is, everybody can't get enough of warehouse and logistics. It's like the crack cocaine of developers, you know? They can't get enough of it, all right? The problem with that is, there's no consideration for the pollution effect of the diesel soot. I'm, I'm, I don't mind if I'm a broken record there. Now you're sitting up with an industrially-zoned area, with mega-sized warehouses, with 90% chance right now, under current design, it's going to be industrial soot that's going to go over the freeway to a large housing tract. So the engineering needs to start thinking about mitigation, how are you going to fix that? I, for one, have a strong belief that you should abandon the interchange project, and that look as an, it's just my opinion, and, and look as an alternative of upgrading Forest Street, and looking very closely, when the state money comes, for the I-1060 interchange, to look at that flow of traffic going towards the interchange, and that would direct the traffic. Also, a big deal is, what kind of infrastructure are we going to look at? Are we going to put in an HOV lane? Are we going to look at some kind of a, does the city want to put in some kind of a alternative fuel station to power electric vehicles? I mean, you guys don't realize it, you're right in the middle of all this. You got one of the few towns with this crazy amount of land, you got six square miles of land, I just want you to think about it, when you pick your RFP. Have a great night, thanks a lot.
Uh, real quick, you know about money coming for the 60-10 interchange? You said state money comes in for that? Do we have state money?
Well, I hope it doesn't come in, I don't want to tell you my hidden motive. Less money is good for me.
That's the first I've heard of it, I was just wondering if...
Well, SB 1 is, you know, obviously there, and I'm sure you're aware of it, but that's very questionable, because fuel consumption's going down.
He's going to...
I'm going to prefer to sleep on this.
Item was pulled, so it's okay to have public comments.
It has been pulled, I've gotten way too much, so, that's very good.
All right.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkney.
Have a great night, thanks.
Appreciate it. Okay, so we'll move on to item 19, issuance of requests for proposals for engineering design services for the Oak Valley Parkway Interstate 10 improvements, project phase two, and do we have any public comments on this item?
No.
Okay.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember, this is a request to proceed with the RFP for the Phase 2 of Oak Valley I-10 interchange project. Currently, there are, there is a bridge over I-10 at Oak Valley, that consists of two, two lanes, one in each direction, and there is off-ramps and on-ramps in each direction. The first phase of the project consisted of having signals placed at the intersection, at the off-ramps and on-ramps, and that project is ongoing. In the second phase of this project, just one second.
I'm having the extra copies put in the back, if anyone would like to get one.
To Oak Valley I-10 interchange project, there was a project, I'm sorry. Back in 2009, there was a project study report that was approved for this project. And basically, what it did, it was adding additional lanes on the, on the bridge itself, and reconfiguration of the off-ramps and on-ramps. There were several alternates that were considered, the ones that were recommended in the study were 2A and 2B, and alternate 4. And, and the cost associated with alternate 2 and 2B is 29 million, and then alternate 4 is $52 million. And this is a sketch of alternate 2A, it shows the layout of the bridge, the layout of the ramps, it's a, it's a, it allows for, for widening of the bridge, and allows for additional ramps installed, it's moving some of the side streets. 2B is very similar to that, slightly different layout, and then alternate 4 is, is reconfiguration of the side street, further away to provide additional capacity. So what we're doing as we move forward is, we'll putting an RFP out to proceed with the Phase 2 of the project, which is design of the bridge, design of the off-ramps, on-ramps, realignment of the side streets, environmental, and as well as right-of-acquisition for this project. We expect the RFP process to last 60 days, both the section process, and we believe that we will be ready to award this project later on this year, or early next year, for design. Some of the funding that is coming for this project is, is through funds that are being advanced by party, home, as part of their development projects, and that would fund the design and environmental, and that right-of-construction phase of this, right-of-acquisition phase of this project. Once that's done, we'll have a better understanding of the cost of the project itself, as we go through that, and we'll be preparing a funding plan as we move forward. As, as we've done, as, as we've seen on Potrero, there are options of doing phased improvements, such as putting the ramp, off-ramps and on-ramps, and then doing the, the bridge later, or doing the bridge before, and then doing the off-ramps and on-ramps later, so we'll be considering that as well as part of the development of this project. That concludes my report, I'll be happy to answer any questions. That includes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Lara?
No, sir.
Mr. Martinez. What's the difference between 2A and 2B? I've not seen that, real quick.
It's, it's the, let me see, it's this, if you look at the hook ramps that are there on 2, 2A, it's the radius of the ramps, that's different.
They're tighter, turns in?
They're tighter turned than they are.
Okay.
And then, as we go through the traffic analysis, it'll dictate which one works better for the project.
Okay, and no public comments on this one? Okay. And so we are just authorizing, approving the issuance of the RFP for engineering design services, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I will move that we approve the attached RFP for engineer design services for the Oak Valley Parkway Interstate 10 improvements, project phase two.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
Item number 20 is the professional services agreement for the design of the City Hall Building renovation project in the amount not to exceed $31,600 to Adrian Gaus, architects of Redlands, California.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, as part of this year's budget and last year's budget, we've been adding positions that are professional level that require office space and, and cubicle space. Just in my department alone, we've added three positions in the last fiscal year and three this current fiscal year that will require office space within the City Hall. Then other departments are also going through expansion and also hiring additional staff members. We're running out of space in where all the current offices are located. We've looked at the need and, and availability of the offices within the City Hall. And as part of this assessment, what we will do is we'll look at all the office space that's available in the City Hall, including the building that's just to the north of the City Hall as we exit toward the, toward the back parking lot, and see if we can expand and add between eight to 12 office spaces and additional desk spaces. And this will provide for expansion for, for this year and possibly for next one or two years as, as we're proceeding with finalizing the study that looks at the overall office space. That's a different study, a different architect that may be working on looking at the office space and office planning for the next five to 10 years. So this is just barely looking at the next year, two years, three years out and making sure that the staff members, the engineers that are being hired for my department, the analysts, and the other staff members that are being hired for other departments have an office space, there is computers available, desks available, so we can keep, keep working in this time. So the total cost of the, we did the RFP, there were five consultants that responded, went through the process, city's process of selection, and we believe Adrian Gaus, architect, is best suited for this, for this project, so we're recommending approval of contract with them for $31,600.
Okay, any public comments on this one? Any questions from council, comments?
Is there?
Go ahead.
Is there any benefit to, to doing a, a master plan first, rather than, we're doing the small office first right now, right? And then we're gonna go ahead and look at a larger plan or the five-year plan. Is there any benefit just to looking out further, like your five-year plan and then including your, your one-year immediate plan as a part of that? Does that make sense?
Yes, and I think that this is more focused and that's more broad.
Right.
So this one allows us to quickly finish that analysis and start construction. I think we're gonna be adding some office space, we're gonna be putting some walls in, there's going to be construction drawings that need to be done. So that's why we broke this out, put it, put it at a faster pace, because the need is there. Within six months, we're gonna have additional staff members. The other study probably, it'll take probably a year to 15 months to complete. And I think we don't have time to wait for the first, that analysis to be able to provide space for the staff. There is, there are rooms available, for example, toward, to the east, and we wanna look at how we can renovate those and put some staff members there. There's some of the rooms that are being used for other purposes in the City Hall that can also be repurposed for office space. So this is, we're just looking at very.
Repurposing.
Yeah, existing office.
Repurposing, so the footprint isn't changing?
Footprint is not changing.
Okay, thank you.
With, with the first step of the new staffing in the restructure that we've done, for example, we're reshuffling all the offices that are here, plus we're consuming this one office that's, you know, back over here at the very end. So functionally, there's a concern there, and it's extremely tight. So, you know, I think Omar's being very positive, I think, in thinking about, yeah, this may be a five-year plan. I think this, we may have to plan to be in this building longer than that. Yeah, I could see us 10 years or so in this building, which is fine. But the key issue is that you've got some existing pieces that are within this area right now that you could probably cost-effectively, we think, address. And so what that is, there's an existing detached building to the back. And so looking potentially at connecting and enclosing that kind of breezeway between that building and this one. So enclose that and then do a little bit of renovation and create some office spaces in there, buy you some time. I think if we design it correctly, ultimately, if City Hall does move to a new building, you've got a community center facility here that you can continue to use, you can kind of repurpose that. We did look at the possibility of even having to, as Omar said, come into some of these current community center areas that are used quite a bit and start to consume some of those areas potentially even. So, which kind of detracts from the purpose and kind of the neat aspect of this building. So those are the things that we're balancing. Ultimately, when, and we're gonna come back to you in a couple meetings with RFPs for a facilities master plan, which is gonna look at all the departments, is gonna be looking at kind of spaces that we'll need over time. Those will be significant capital expenditures, I guarantee you that that plan is gonna identify that we need. So it'll take some years to put funding mechanisms together to try to bring those together. So really, we kind of see this as there's an immediate need we have right now, which we're doing an office shuffle. There's no more, there's gonna be very few spaces left to put staff without starting to consume these other meeting spaces in here. So that's, that's really what we're facing today. And what we'll kind of get into, you know, in the next couple of years, as we have to look at some questions.
Mr. Martinez?
So it says provide buildable plans, so will we have plans? And then the next it would say, okay, let's go get an RFP to see how much it's gonna cost to do that?
Yes.
That kind of how it works?
Okay, yeah, you'll have some idea of cost, you know, so we should have your plans, which will have some accompanying kind of project costs. So you can look at and say, you know, it's, it's, you know, X million dollars to do it. You may say, no, we're, you know, maybe we don't wanna do that yet.
And since it's no footprint, so we're not extending or anything, we're just repurposing what we have in creative ways?
Repurposing, and I, I think, you know, what we had asked them to do is to look at making a physical connection to enclose this area back here between the existing building and the other permanent building that's there. Right, and then, and right now, that building is used for storage, we got storage in that building. So we have the other vacant building, which is Building D, I think is what it's called, that, you know, we, it's really open and vacant right now, and that's a pretty good-sized building footprint there. But we can actually formalize and put some storage in that building, clear out these other spaces where we need to work together, make that functional, and then look at what the next long-term phase for city offices needs to be.
You sort of answered my question, which was, we're not focusing only on this physical building, we're looking at the one back here as well. Are, are we looking at any of the other buildings, the one straight at the other end of the parking lot? Or the one out across from the police, police department?
Yeah, that'll happen under a different study, so when we look at the facilities master plan, 'cause we're looking at a campus environment here.
Okay.
And possibilities, you know, can we redevelop, create some people spaces and some closets and some things here, kind of more appropriate to downtown and functionality for this space. This is really gonna look at this, I mean, this building and these concepts that we've talked about to repurpose this, at least portion of the building and make those connections back here.
Okay, do I have any other comments, questions? Someone like to make a motion? Yeah, I can make a motion. And so, item 20, so I approved the award of professional services agreement to Adrian Gaus, architect, in the amount not to exceed $31,600 for the City Hall Building renovation project. I'll second that.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
All right, move on to item 21. We save the best for last.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I come before you to speak to you about concealed carry weapons permit as defined in the California Government Code. It's an issue I've been looking at since 2015 when I assumed command of the Police Department. Of course, in 2015, I had many other challenges and obstacles before me, and this certainly, while I examined it and spoke with other chiefs and sheriff's personnel about it, I just didn't have the time to dedicate to it as I have now. And so currently, our residents are able to apply with the Sheriff's Department for a concealed weapons permit. The sheriff has the same problem that, that most all of us have, we have a staffing shortage, and so we may do with what we can. He has two full-time investigators assigned from his department, but for a county of 3 million-plus residents and, and counting. And so the sheriff has been gracious to accept our residents' requests or applications for concealed weapons permit. But again, the wait, the initial wait is hovering around two years for your initial interview. My philosophy and the philosophy of the city of, in the Police Department of being a community-oriented policing and problem-solving platform is that if we're gonna deliver a service, then it should be in a timely fashion, we should address the issues. And so, again, my, my problem was, I didn't, I didn't have staff. And staff I have are better suited to handle the things that they need to handle in this community. And so I wasn't gonna pull them off of proactive approaches or resolving crime or writing tickets to handle these requests. And so, and in my chief's group, networking with the chiefs, I've learned of this program that the Marietta Police Department had started with a public-private partnership. And what they discovered is that there is, there is another option. Our first two options were to not issue or to refer you to the Sheriff's Department. And now a third option has come up, which is we could not issue, we can refer you to sheriffs, or we can have a public-private partnership and address our residents' desire to have a way to protect themselves, their family, or whatever their good cause may be. And so we looked at the program, asked a lot of questions, did all the research, and what we found is that the, the program that we're looking to do is cost-neutral to the city. The Government Code defines what the Beaumont Police Department can receive, and we have a fingerprinting fee, and then the total fees are right around $100. The other fees are, are that the applicant's gonna pay directly to the vendor, so the background check, the firearm safety course, and we're requiring a psychological exam. And right now, the Sheriff's Department does not, that's his prerogative, I'm not here to speak of that. But for me, if I'm gonna issue your license, we're gonna go as far as the law allows us to do. And so we believe that somebody should be mentally sound to do that. We believe that, that we could process an application probably within a couple of months. So we believe that with the increased staffing through the private vendors, that, that three- to four-month wait has actually been reduced. And so it's a very comprehensive program. This is not a license for anybody to buy a firearm, you already have to qualify through Cal DOJ. And then this is a separate process that starts with them, and so there's a lot of vetting that goes behind it. But again, my platform as the chief of public safety here is that we'll partner with you. We can't be everywhere at once. If you, you have a good cause and a reasonable need, then we'll, you know, we'll go down that path with you.
Any questions?
If somebody is, passes the psychological aspect of it today, in two years or a year from now, we're no longer, we'll call psychologically fit, is there a revocation of that permit to carry?
Absolutely, and so if I issue and then you're arrested, or you don't even have to go that far, but, you know, you, you just aren't a good moral character or other reasons defined in the Government Code, then I can revoke it.
So you're monitoring the people that have these, so to speak, or?
Absolutely, so, once we fingerprint people, we'll, we will get what we call a hit or return on persons that are fingerprinted or arrested in the future.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Mr. Martinez?
So Chief, then, after the investigation and so forth, and the fingerprints clearing and so forth, the final decision lies with the chief as far as issuing the permit?
That's correct.
Okay, and again, with revoking it as well, obviously, like you said. Tell me about this private company. Where does the liability lie if the private company is approving it? And then we say, okay, we'll take your recommendation and then you issue. I mean, if something happens as a result of that permit that was issued, do they carry their own liability, or how does that work?
Yeah, great question, and so the chief and the sheriff have immunity when we issue the concealed weapons permits. So we do a thorough background, you're fingerprinted, DOJ, application goes up to them as well, they return, you do the psychological exam, my investigations lieutenant reviews the packet, will make a recommendation. I have the packet, it's something that I will spend considerable time reviewing. But once issued, I do have immunity, which means the department, the city, has immunity.
And you mentioned the DOJ and the, so the, is the background investigator DOJ, it's not the private company?
No, DOJ is, has their own, their own standard of, you know, probably of, you know, things that get reported to them through their network. As far as the private investigator, the firm we're using, again, this will be the, the client directly doing business with them in that sense of the, of the payment. But these are 28, 30-year career background investigators, homicide investigators that have retired and now do this work. So they know what they're looking for, they, they look for the signs when they speak to people, they've interviewed many, many people. They've, you know, these are the same people that look at police officers or deputy sheriffs and make a recommendation if they should be hired or not.
Okay. How many, do you know how many CCWs we have in Beaumont now?
Well, to my knowledge, it's probably expired, but one that the previous chief issued.
Okay. And so, you know, questions been raised with, with me from Citizen who was interested in comparing, comparison, comparing Riverside Sheriff to what you're proposing here. So let me ask you some non-financial questions first. Right now, if the sheriff grants the, the permit, does that have a final approval from you?
No.
Okay, so the sheriff gets the final word at this point. If the sheriff issues the permit and a scenario comes up where you're talking about revoking it, can you revoke it without having to go to the sheriff and getting their authorization to revoke it? Or can you, can you just do that on your own?
No, I cannot. If the sheriff issued it, then he has the authority over it.
Okay, and you would only be able to issue permits for Beaumont citizens, correct?
Correct.
Even if, if someone was a citizen of another city but worked in Beaumont, they would not come to you? They'd go to either the other city or the, or the sheriff of that county?
That's correct.
Okay. And I think what you were talking about, I, I think, I thought this was where Mr. Martinez was going, is that the, the people who are going through this process are going to pay vendors for things like the psychological exam and some of the other issues like that. So if you could, I sent you a text earlier to sort of get you to know where I was going with this. On, on the first face of this, the process through the sheriff, even though it takes 22 months or whatever the average is, is considerably lower-priced. But am I looking at apples and apples here? I mean, 'cause we, is, if you go to the sheriff, are you going to a different person? I mean, because we, is, if you go to the sheriff, are you going to a different person to get the psychological exam, or is the Sheriff's Department doing that?
Absolutely. So the Sheriff's Department does not require a psychological exam. The company we utilize is the same company that our police officers and our, even our dispatchers and all of our police folks go for their psychological reviews. So we have a relationship with them. We trust them. We have a contract with them. The cost between Beaumont and the sheriff is about a hundred dollars and change difference.
Okay.
All right, so when, if you look at the sheriff's website, they're listing their fee for the processing of the prints and the application fee, but there's still other costs with them as well. You have a range fee. For us, we have, and their range fee's much more expensive than our safety course. You know, the big difference really in our costs is that we require a psychological review, but, you know, I don't see a reason to do away with that.
Nor do I. So if you issue a permit, how long is that good for? Is there an open end, or is it?
There's a renewal process every two years.
And do they have to do a new psychological exam every two years?
I don't believe so, but I have an expert in CCWs here with me.
Okay.
That I invited. Bring him. Would you like to speak with him on that specific question? So I'll introduce Mike Pino of Pino and Associates.
Okay.
And he'll assist with some of these.
Thanks, you're welcome. I'm a retired sheriff lieutenant, too, so.
Okay.
I did about thirty years.
Which department?
Riverside County.
Okay.
Well, I worked LA County, City of Tusson, but I ended my career at Riverside County. To answer that last question, yeah, after the two-year period, they have to go through the process again.
Okay.
It's just, and then that's the safeguard section, because you just never know, and then they go through the full background investigation, everything. And you want to do that just to be on the safe side.
Sure.
And I think it's the municipalities that we're doing this for now, or the city police departments, they have the foresight of going through the psychological exam, because we do the background, we do background investigations for police departments, too. So it's a good thing. And I can't speak for the sheriff. I don't know what the reasons are why they don't do it, but the psychological exam is really the only major extra cost, but the cap on that for any agency by the state is you can't charge more than a hundred fifty dollars anyways. So I, so another agency can't come in or another psychologist can't come and say, well, we charge three hundred, and you try to send them that way. A hundred fifty is the cap, and all these prices are, there's caps on them. Nobody can just come in and charge more, so folks can gain revenue and so forth. So you're protected in that respect, too, that your citizens aren't being gouged. When we set this up, we set it up to be very cost-effective, very minimal cost to the citizens. We did our own marketing analysis. We didn't want to look like somebody that was trying to just make this a profit. We were more long-term, looking at two, three years from now and getting all the ten cities in Riverside County eventually. So we invest about twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars and build this website for you, and we provide all those costs upfront.
Okay.
That it's just the transition is easy, and you can imagine what one investigator could cost a police department if they were doing this, just in payroll costs alone. So, and as the chief said, our investigators are all twenty-five to thirty, or thirty-year retired veterans. They're all background-certified. They've done investigations for background and for police officers. And it's actually my demand as owning the company that they have to have this amount of experience before they come work for me.
And how many cities in Riverside are issuing their own permits?
Right now, just Marietta, we saw this need because the sheriff was just getting backlog. It's really not his fault.
Right.
But it's just so many applications coming through. So we spent about eight, nine months looking into how to do this process and expedite this process, and we found our average right now is two to three months.
Okay.
Our best-case scenario was yesterday, eighteen days.
Okay.
So, and I can tell you that ninety-five percent of the feedback we're getting from the city of Marietta is extremely positive by the community there.
Okay, and Chief, I asked that question to lead into my next question to you, which is?
But I do apologize. I do want to clarify.
Okay.
Mr. Pino might have, how many cities in Riverside is he doing? But there are, you know, other chiefs that are issuing their own CCWs.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. So that makes my question even better. Why did you use the Marietta template, I guess? Why are you choosing the way Marietta does it versus what all these other, what the other cities may be doing?
Yeah, good question. So some of the cities that are larger than us, certainly is Riverside PD, Corona PD, I mean, they have more staff.
Okay.
And they can dedicate staff to it. I just cannot, even if I had it, even if you said, hey, you know what, you do them, I'll give you a body, I would plead with you to say, listen, I could use that body for other things. You know, this is a cost-neutral solution for us that's also timely for the residents to get what they're asking for. And again, I believe in partnering with them and their public safety needs.
Okay, so the cost that Beaumont is actually going to charge meets the cost of providing the Beaumont part of the services?
Absolutely. So the most that we're going to get is our fingerprint processing fee and then the, so basically a hundred dollars.
Okay.
And that'll offset the fingerprint rolling, the lieutenant's time, and my time. You know, if there's a question about staff time, that's the most we could charge, and that'll cover it.
Now, if we go ahead and move forward on this, can a citizen who maybe thinks you don't like them still go through the sheriff's process?
Absolutely. That's the great thing, is there's choices. And so their three choices are pretty simple. Well, I don't want to mention the fourth choice, which is to illegally carry a concealed weapon, but don't ask for one. Ask the sheriff and get on the waiting list, or come to us, you know, as your police department in convenience, out of convenience, and we'll put you in the process immediately.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Any other questions?
So that concerns me. So you have the sheriff that can still issue one that doesn't do the psychological evaluation, and we issue them, I don't know, I just?
And you can't revoke the one from the sheriff? Is that correct?
No, I cannot. But, you know, and listen, I trust the Sheriff's Department. They've been doing their job for a very long time. There's, I mean, this is where these guys came from. So they're very good at what they do.
They're just bogged down with numbers.
They're just bogged down. And, you know, he has two folks to it full-time, and I believe in being a good partner to the sheriff. He spoke recently at our Beaumont Chamber Breakfast, and he spoke to our residents, and both the Banning Chief and I were there, and, I mean, you could hear him pleading in his, in his very savvy words of, hey, guys, I'm ready for you to take this, take this off my plate. And we believe it's time to step up and be that partner to him and our residents.
Okay. Thank you. Any else? We need to get a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion, recommend that council receive and file.
So by receiving and file, are we saying we're moving forward this, or is it going to come back to us again for an actual approval, or?
No, absolutely, no. This is an information for me to communicate with you.
Okay.
What the Police Department's doing and to communicate to the public what we're doing for them.
Okay.
But so that, so that as our elected, you are well aware of what the Police Department was doing. The government code does grant exclusive authority to the chief of police and the sheriff of any city or county to issue CCWs.
Okay, okay. So I move we receive and file this report.
We had a motion by Laura. Do you want a second?
I'll second, Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Councilman Martinez?
Yes.
And yes. All right. Item twenty-three, city attorney invoices for the month of June twenty-seventeen.
Because this matter involves my law firm, I'm going to recuse myself and step out of the room.
Okay. All right, Mr. Pardon. I guess you get to present this.
Why do you? I would reject the payment of this.
So I guess there's really not a report, is there?
I think, I think, you know, this invoice is totaled, you're sixty-six thousand five-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars for services rendered through July. One of the things that we have finished up is a lot of heavy legal work that's reflected in this invoice. And what you should start to see, I believe, now, you know, next month and then the next, through the really balance of the year, is some significant reduction in the amount of legal fees that we're paying. So just that, there's just been so much that we've worked through and we've had to clear out. So remember, we had cut our legal budget in half this year, and so we should be working within our budget around the year, is what we're expecting to see.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just want to remind the public that we do get, as council members, detail of the invoices, so we are, at least I am, reviewing them. So it's not just a blanket, yes.
All right. No public comments on this one? All right. I'll move to approve the invoices in the amount of sixty-six thousand five-sixty-seven fifty-seven cents.
I'll second.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. All right, we'll move on to council reports. Mr. Laura, would you like to go first?
You know, I just have a quick comment. I do have a, in the effort to be more transparent, I do have a new email address. It is on the city website, mlarra@ci.baumont.ca.us. This makes it easier and quicker for staff should they receive a public information request. They have control over that email account, and hopefully this helps with our response times. I'll need new business cards, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez?
I attended the WR cog general assembly meeting on June twenty-second. I attended the mayor and council member forum in late June, a series of workshops and sessions. I attended about five or six sessions, including bringing broadband technology to your community and how social media affects public policy, what elected officials need to know about the California Voting Rights Act, city manager and city council relations, and city finance workshop. It was very helpful and extremely informative, and it makes, I believe, a better council member to get all this information, so.
And you did that where?
That was the Monterey Conference. I did it there. It was very good. It prepped for the other one.
Must be nice having that time off in the summer to do stuff like that.
The weather was nice. Sixty-one degrees was very pleasant.
Okay, so I, as I said before, I attended the first WR cog meeting Beaumont's been at in nearly a decade. And then we had a executive, and that was the executive board meeting. At that meeting, the board passed the TUMF, the NEXUS report, which was the first, one of the first conditions that we need to be able to rejoin TUMF. But at this point, it now has to be ratified by all the member cities. So that will be coming to us, I would think. We, do we have to ratify it as well, even though we're not a member yet? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And, and one of the problems, or one of the issues I had a concern with was they had a CPI that came with that NEXUS report. I'm sorry, this was a separate issue. There was another issue, the Measure A, we talked about Measure A earlier at the beginning of the meeting, a Measure A CPI capital, CIP, capital improvement program that listed all the different cities and what their plan is for those cities as far as their capital improvement funds from Measure A. And for Beaumont, there was a asterisk with a footnote, and there was nothing across the board for Beaumont for the next five years. And the asterisk said that we were not, we had not yet joined. So technically, I approached that. Mr. Pardon contacted WR cog, and then in the open session of that meeting, just to make sure it got on the record, I confirmed that once the NEXUS study has been ratified by the other member cities, that they will then go back and, once we have provided a CIP, which I think you said we're probably a few months away from doing, from getting that completed, that they'll then take into account our CIP and be able to go back and get us into the plan to begin receiving funds for capital improvement projects, the Measure A funds. Did I miss anything on that? Okay. So that's my report. And now we'll go to the city treasurer report.
Good evening. I do have a report from the Finance and Audit Committee meeting on June twenty-sixth. The committee welcomed our two new members, Joanne Roberts and Steve Cooley, and two new alternate members, Steve Martino and John Chamberlain. And then the Finance Director, Melana Taylor, updated the committee on staff's progress in response to the State Controller's Office Administrative and Accounting Internal Control findings summary. And all findings on that summary have been corrected with the following exceptions. Finding one B was accounting for fixed assets and inventory. A consultant has been hired and is in the process of completing an inventory of all assets with proper cost evaluation. Finding number six, lack of administrative policies. Policies and procedures are continually reviewed, and every effort is being made to update in all areas. Staff is currently developing detailed policy and procedures to coordinate with the new software, the transactional controls. Target completion is September of two thousand seventeen. Finding nine A, bank reconciliations are not prepared, reviewed, and approved in a timely manner. As of June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, the general account will be reconciled weekly, and LEAF is reconciled quarterly, and all other accounts are reconciled monthly. Finding ten, inadequate financial reporting. July is the Finance Director's target to have regular and consistent monthly reporting to the Finance Committee and City Council. And then Melana also explained to us how the elements of internal control are evaluated. And we discussed the types of reports we would like to see on a monthly and quarterly basis. And Melana said current financial reports will be presented at our next meeting on August seventh. Todd was not able, Todd Pardon was not able to attend the meeting due to the Manzanita fire being fought that day. He came in at the end of the meeting at the tail end.
You were actually fighting.
Really tired. Future agendas, current financial reports, reviewing internal control processes and procedures. And Todd said he would update us on the classification and compensation study.
Thank you. Any questions for our treasurer? And we'll move on to the city manager report.
All right. I've got a few very brief things, and then I'm going to invite Almer up to present to you where we are in some key capital projects issues. So one of the things I did learn through Manzanita was that you guys don't really care about major fires. It's kind of, hey, you know, the countryside's on fire, and nobody's stressed. It's like, yeah, that's what we do. We put it out. So it was pretty amazing to watch that process, and y'all didn't freak out. It's pretty awesome. Councilmember Laura, I think you forgot to give us your debit card number, too? So you gave us your email address, and I was ready to note that.
It's coming.
Oh, okay.
I have it.
Okay.
And the PIN number.
And I did get a report back from Councilwoman Martinez at his retreat, I'm sorry.
Workshop.
Oh, workshop, yes. He did excel in comedy in the chambers, section one oh one, so, yeah.
I learned from the best.
You did. Who was that? Was that the mayor? Right, sure. Well, now for the serious business, I would like to turn it over. Almer, he's back there? There he is. Bring us up just.
I have a real quick addition. I meant to mention on the business cards, could you, two things. Could you, I'd like some new business cards, but I'd like to put my cell phone number on there.
Okay.
So that I can, because often I want to hand that out to someone that I want them to call me. I'll probably have two cards, you know, one. So at least I can control it, but it's difficult to go and write the number down every time I need to. So if you're going to print more cards. So, if you're going to print more cards. The other thing, I think I've seen at a lot of get-togethers or meetings, is a lot of other cities have name tags. I don't really want a name tag, but it's really helpful, because people walk up to you, and they don't have to try and remember what your name was. And they have the city logo on it, and I think I mentioned it to you a while back, and, you know, I don't know if these guys don't want to do it, but I think it's helpful, especially when we're out in the community. You know, people know right away who, you know, which one of us is which, and, you know, who they need to attack, for whatever reason.
So, again, if I just get your credit card numbers, we'll get those on those cards.
I'll get it for you.
Be great.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Checkere.
Honorable Mayor, council members, I've provided you with the traffic assessment for Highland Springs Avenue. Our traffic consultant, Minigun Associate, has completed an in-depth analysis of Highland Springs Avenue and Second Street and the traffic congestion that's there. As expected, we didn't find there's any quick improvements to the street sections, adding lanes or adding left turn lanes that would address the issues. Just a brief overview of the problems there. There are short-term problems that include timing of the signals that are there. This study does collect data to address some of the short-term problems. We're going to be working with City of Banning and Caltrans, and we'll adjust the timing on the signal. That's very quick, it's not very costly, and it'll provide a little bit of relief. Then, there's some midterm or medium-term improvements that we can do to provide relief, and those include extension of Second Street to Pennsylvania Avenue, doing modifications to the driveways and the signals that are on Second Street, and directing traffic away from Highland Springs towards Pennsylvania or around First Street, and then back onto Highland Springs Avenue, and that should provide some relief. And then, the other one is realignment of Joshua Palmer Avenue Drive in City of Banning, which moves the intersection of Joshua Palmer north about a couple of blocks, and that allows traffic relief at off-ramps and on-ramps on the north side of I-10. So, those are the medium, middle terms. Some of the data collected in this report will help us come up with some ideas to do that. So, what the report looked at was the signals that are there on Highland Springs Avenue, there's five of them, three of them are Caltrans, and two of them are for City of Banning, City of Beaumont together. And then, the other thing we looked at was City of Second Street, and we also looked at a roundabout, and this is on Commerce Avenue on Second Street, and this would allow free flow of traffic as it comes out of the shopping center there, where Home Depot is and some of the other restaurants are. And it does start to congest at time, even though the level of service, as shown in our report, is fairly decent. But we're going to keep that in mind as other developments are coming in there, to make sure that the traffic pattern doesn't get worse as we go through that. And if there is a need to put a traffic circle, a roundabout there, and if there is a, there is a saving in time to the, to the public there, as it traverses that intersection, I think we will look at, consider putting that in there. But one of the main things we need to consider is, is trying to move traffic more towards the west, towards Pennsylvania Avenue, and that's the long-term solution. Long-term solution is to be able to put, widen Pennsylvania Avenue, extend Second Street to Pennsylvania Avenue, provide off-ramps and on-ramps at the current project that we have ongoing, and also do the grade separation of Pennsylvania Avenue. And then, another long-term project would be extension of Sun Lakes Boulevard to the east in City of Banning, and connecting it to Sunset Avenue. That will provide some relief in traffic as well. And the last project would be the interchange of Highland Springs Avenue itself, redoing the interchange to provide a wider roadway there. So, the long-term solutions are something that we can't really get into now, even though we are working on some of them. But with this study, we believe that we can start working on some of the short-term and the midterm solutions. So, you'll see that coming forward in the next few months, as we work out the details of what we can and can't do, and what money is there to do, to rerouting of the traffic, adding of the signals, the stop sign, or any of the devices that we can consider. So, that's, that's the, that's the report. We'll bring an update to you in about a month or so, once we have information back from City of Banning and Caltrans. As far as other projects in the city, we are, on Oak Valley and Zenia Avenue, we have, we've gone through, we're going through the bidding process, we authorized the bids to go out, we went out to bid on July 4th of this year. We expect the bids to come in tomorrow, I believe it's July 19th that they're coming in. And we plan to have that project in front of council in July, in August 1st. The project consists of redoing, reconstruction of Zenia Avenue, and also on Oak Valley Avenue, reconstruction of the pavement there, and then restripping, widening of two lanes from Cherry Avenue all the way to Beaumont Avenue. So, those are the scope of the, scope of that project. On H Street, the project is 100% complete. We're working on the punch list item, and we'll be finalizing the project in August. That's the update on project. We'll have another update of the rest of the projects next month.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Checkere?
I just have one. On the traffic study off of Second Street, so, were, was there any mention or any concern regarding the east end exit of Walmart, where they go, they exit there and make the left-hand turn to go to the next shopping center to the east? Is there, was there any concerns, or have we had any traffic issues there? I mean, I've watched traffic exit there to make that left-hand turn towards Carl's Jr., and it's a little scary sometimes when you watch that people exit there.
And that's, that's, we did collect traffic data. That was the first step. The second step is to look at options on either eliminating some of the left turns, redirecting traffic to west, and then making them go around to the First Street, and then looking at the factor that on Highland Springs Avenue itself. So, what we can do is, we can model that traffic and come, and bring that option back to council and see how that would affect. We can also put into effect temporary modifications to the striping, or markings, or the signals, and see how the traffic flows, and then, you know, work two or three weeks. But we'll have to work with the, all of the businesses that are there, make sure that they're aware of what we will be doing. But the biggest problem that I saw in the study that stood out was Second Street and Highland Springs Avenue. The level of service in the morning, in the middle of the day, and at the end of the day is D, which means traffic is congested, it's just sitting there, it's not moving, and that's causing a lot of problems to everybody else that's trying to get through that intersection. So, any load we can take off of that intersection would help alleviate traffic that's going north and south on Highland Springs Avenue.
My last question is, you talked about a roundabout. Do we have the big enough easements there to put a roundabout at that location?
To what we consider so far is just the movements only of the roundabouts. The physical footprint and all of that would be a design consideration, so we haven't really got into that much detail yet.
Thank you.
Mr. Martinez?
No, just a question. I had a lot of people asking about the timing of those lights on Highland Springs, and how you have to coordinate with, with Banning and so forth. So, when they do become timed and coordinated, I hear that when they go out, or you have to flash them for emergency or whatever, it takes an act of Congress to get everybody back and get it resynced. I mean, is it that difficult, really, to get those things synced?
Well, we're trying to set up communication with Banning and Caltrans, so if the timing does go out, first of all, we'll review it, either monthly or every two months, to make sure that it is, it is still, the timing is right. The other thing is, if the lights go out or timing gets messed up, we have access to Caltrans, and they can come in within a day or so and readjust the light. So, it's really not a big deal. It's just that the timing chart has to be right, and then, we all have to coordinate to make sure that we all set our clocks, you know, to the, to the right time, so then, the coordination goes back into effect. But it's just a matter of coordinating with them. They're all agreeable to do it.
Okay. First of all, I personally think, and I hope this gets done before the end of my term, I think that Pennsylvania is key. Now, I understand that if we start sending everyone down Pennsylvania, I'm sorry, down Second Street to Pennsylvania, that it might have an impact on what's happening right down there at Pennsylvania. But there's, there's a lot of people that have to go through the interchange across Second Street over to First Street, and then goes that way, and then back down this, and First Street gets to be, gets to be a little bit crazy as well. So, I would like to see the Pennsylvania solution, even though we're not, we may not be ready with all of the other pieces of Pennsylvania, if it doesn't create a, you know, traffic nightmare, I think we should look at that. A lot of people, I don't know, I do myself go through cold, go back, back door through colds. They got that huge speed bump at the end, they just, no matter how slow you go, it sounds like it's just killing your car. And then, the realignment of Joshua Palmer, the City of Banning just passed that last, in their last council meeting, gave the approval to move forward on that. And I get a lot of calls, or a lot of questions, mostly emails, from people who were asking, why are we adding another intersection there? And I tried to explain to them that it's replacing the east-westbound off-ramp. Isn't that correct? When it goes behind, when they realign it to go behind the farmhouse and empty out like at Wendy's?
Yeah, it's, it's actually not adding an intersection, it's just moving the intersection to the north. The intersection is already there. As we get off I-10 going westbound, there is a street that's just right next to it, that's Side Street. That Side Street creates a lot of problems, it doesn't have a capacity, and also, the timing of the signals get all impacted.
Right. And that's the way, I understand that. And the problem is, when these big bricks come off of the westbound, and then they can't make it all the way through the intersection, and everything has to back up, because we have to wait for that interchange, that's going to, that's going to help reduce that a little bit. I'm just suggesting that we need to try, every time we talk about Joshua Palmer, in the same conversation, explain to people we're replacing, we're moving the interchange, the off-ramp, because some people think, well, why do you need another one? It's really going to mess up those lights. And that's really all I had for you, but I did have a question for Mr. Pardon.
I do, too.
Okay.
So, on that topic, that's probably about as much as we can get into, given that it's not an agendized item.
Got it.
And we do have a digital version of that report that you received, which we plan to have on the city website.
Okay.
I view that as the city manager having the city engineer give you an update on his activities and some brief comments back and forth, but there's a limit to how far we can.
Okay.
So, on, just back to the email addresses and Mayor White's credit card, and the fact that he wants to put his phone number, you had mentioned in an earlier meeting that you had talked about perhaps getting phones for council members, another part of the transparency and the Supreme Court rulings. I'm just wondering if that's going to occur anytime soon, because I would, that number I'd like on the business cards, and that way, we're not just printing business cards.
I agree.
You betcha. Yeah, we'll do that, and I'll visit with staff about getting that process going, so we've had people kind of out on leave, so everybody's kind of getting back in, so we'll get, work on that.
Same. And my next comment or question is, you couldn't have been more appropriate timing-wise with what you suggested about this item not being there. I've seen most city manager reports, and the ones we had, I think, before you were here, as well as some of the other neighbors, where the city manager report will itemize some items that you're going to talk about. Would that, if, if an item like this had been itemized on there, then we could have gone a little bit more into detail on that, correct?
Yeah. So, under the Brown Act, the city manager and those that work at his direction are permitted to give brief reports on their activities since the last meeting. That's appropriate. And there can be brief comments or direction to staff by the council, so the way that it's been done is appropriate. But if you do list an item, if there's something that's going to be a heavier item to discuss, and you list it, then it does allow you to kind of drill down more.
Okay. And if, if we list, say, three or four items, but we want to have the ability for the city manager to speak on something that's either come up since the items come out, can we have a miscellaneous item or other items that we can't drill into, but I don't want to, now, he's not restricted from talking about anything during the city manager.
Right. So, obviously, if you can list the items, that's best, because then it gives you the opportunity to have a detailed back-and-forth exchange. But it is appropriate and is permissible for the city manager, the city attorney, and the city clerk, and the city treasurer to give you a brief report. Just as a council gives a brief report on its activities, you can have us do the same without agendizing everything that we're going to mention.
Okay.
But if there's something that you want to have a more detailed conversation on, then, you know, by listing it, let's say, for example, I was going to talk tonight about a specific matter, an issue, then I might list it, you know, a legal development or something, and I wanted to have a back-and-forth exchange, and I would list that matter under my reports, so that we could have a detailed exchange, get public comment, so.
So, I'm thinking moving forward, especially with a mayor's report, if there's a little more detail on the agenda, then we can get into it better. Now, we move on to the city clerk report.
I feel like a slacker. Nothing to report.
City attorney report.
Just briefly, you have at tab item in your packet, number 24, the monthly status report on pending litigation that the city is involved in. And the first item is the Morgan case, and as we've reported out, there, there is a settlement that's in the works, not a final settlement. It would, it's going to require bankruptcy court approval by the other side, and so that's delaying the process. The next one is Osorio, and that is still very early on in the case. We're in the discovery phase of the case. We are trying to resolve the matter, and we are having settlement discussions with the opposing side. Peters DBA Pioneer Mobile Village versus City of Beaumont, that case is still pending. There was an appeal on a change of venue issue, but the case is still very early in the process. Then, we have the HUP cases, which I'm not going to go into any detail. There's a number of cases filed by the HUPS, and we're dealing with those. And then, the Robert Duh and Sharon Teague versus City of Beaumont, that case is very early in the process as well. And then, Urban Logic versus City of Beaumont. Urban Logic filed a lawsuit against the City of Beaumont, claiming that it was owed money. The City of Beaumont filed a cross complaint against Urban Logic, as did WR cog. WR cog filed its own action against Urban Logic. So, that case is very early in, in the litigation process. And then, in addition to those cases, the City of Beaumont filed a lawsuit against the former city attorney, or former city attorneys, Aklufi and Wasaki. And so, that case has been served, but it's very early in the, in the process as well.
I have a question for, where are the rest of the lawsuits?
What other lawsuits?
And this, I've never seen a list this, this short before.
Well, given that, given that, you know, one of the cases is a lawsuit that the city filed, initiated, and like I said, Urban Logic, we've initiated a much more substantial claim against Urban Logic and, and its former owners, Dave Dillon, Ernie Egger, and Deepak Morjani.
That's the only one that's not on here, then, basically, the countersuit that you spoke about?
Well, it's, it's part of that lawsuit that's listed.
Okay.
And given that Morgan, you know, I think we've, we've tentatively reached a settlement, it's just got to go through bankruptcy court approval and be finalized by the parties. You know, the list has gotten very small, so.
Before you leave, I wanted to talk to you about a couple of these here, just one-on-one afterwards. Any questions for Mr. P?. Any ideas for future agenda items? And we'll adjourn this, the meeting at 9:42.